All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, November 17th, 2025 City Council Meeting, roll call. All councilors are present. Would you like to do the invocation this evening?
Absolutely. If everybody could please join me in being the attitude of prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation to know and do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment in making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers, that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
And if everyone would join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number five is a declaration of any conflict of interest. Is there any counselor who would like to declare one this evening? Seeing none. We'll move on to item number six, which is public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, please come up and state your name and address, and you will have five minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name's Randy Violet. I live in Grand Isle, Maine. I own the property at 454 Van Buren Road, Unit Two, and I'm here to get, try to get approved for a waiver for tax foreclosure. I've been in constant contact with Mr. Grant via email and in person in his office. I can have it all paid off in six months, but the foreclosure is Monday by at 4:30. And I was wondering if I could get approved for a waiver for that.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration. We can't make decisions like that during public forum, but thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah. Is there anything else I need to do?
No, not at this time.
How would I find out if I'm approved or not?
Oh, yes, 12A.
Number 1279.
Yep, I see it right there.
Item 12A, if you want to say.
So it's a little bit down on the agenda, but we will be discussing it this evening?
Will I be able to talk back, or?
Generally, no, but you would be able to be here to hear the discussion.
Can I just run over why I got behind real quick?
Sure.
I own two houses, I support four people, and I'm running two houses, and I get no help. And my stepson lives in a Van Buren Road house, and he can't work, so there's no income coming in. So my wife, that's on social security, and I'm a disabled vet. With our income, we're doing both places. And I had to have one of my labs that was supposed to be another therapy lab dog for me this summer, and I had to have him put down at 19 months. It cost thousands of dollars, and I got behind on my taxes. I had talked to Mr. Grant two weeks ago in his office, and we didn't come, well, we talked money there, but it was $335 a month that he would need, which we had, my wife and I switched stuff around, so we could afford to pay the $335 a month, and in six months, I'd be all caught up. Because I have a lot of money invested in that property on the inside, and I'd hate to lose it.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Item number seven would be acceptance of minutes, but we do not have any minutes to approve this evening, so we'll move to item number eight on the agenda, which is bid openings, awards, and appointments. We have several items to discuss under this section this evening, starting with 8A, which is a bid opening for the EPA Brownfields Cleanup Grant for the 2023 diesel plant demolition. That's on page two of your packet.
And RFP, Michelle Messis here, if you have any questions.
Perfect. And Eric, I don't know if you wanted to, did you want to speak, or?
I'm happy to.
Sure.
And Michelle, feel free to.
Just maybe just a little overview.
So, my name's Eric Sanderson. I'm economic and community development specialist for the city of Caribou. The city was awarded funding through the EPA's Brownfields Program to clean up and demolish the diesel plant located at 142 Lower Linden Street. There is asbestos-containing material in the roof, lead paint, universal hazardous waste. So a RFP was put out for off-site disposal and the demolition work. And those were, any interested contractors were required to be at a site walk held on October 22nd, which was very well attended. The city received 15 questions relating to the schedule, electricity, disposal, waste, oil, and a number of other items prior to the deadline for submitting those questions, and then bids were received at the municipal building until 2:00 PM on November 5th, which was a Wednesday. Four bids were received, only two of which were considered responsive. Those two were from Industrial Sales and Salvage, as well as Can Environmental. Both of those firms did attend the site walk, and a review panel of city council members, a member of the Caribou Utility District, and then Michelle, our qualified environmental professional, as well as public work staff and myself, reviewed the proposals, were able to score them, and is presenting this recommendation to you today. There has been a lot of good things happening on the riverfront, and this is definitely part of one of those good things. There's been a lot of legwork to date that I have not been a huge part in, so I mean, thanks to Penny and the council for your leadership and for stewarding this amazing property and cleanup. And with that, if you have anything, Michelle, I'm happy to answer questions, or defer to Michelle if she might know.
Does anybody have questions for Eric or Michelle? Okay. Are the wishes of the council?
I make a motion to accept the proposal from Industrial Sales and Salvage for the contracting demolition services and cleanup of the diesel plant and associated outbuildings in the amount of $235,000.
Second? You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8B is a bid opening for the police station site selection services. That's on page 21 of your packet. So I'll just give a little summary of this. The city council has voted to move the police station project in the direction of looking at existing buildings to be remodeled, and there are materials attached here for you all. Proposals have been submitted by two very qualified firms. The selection committee met and created a list of follow-up questions with a deadline for response. Both firms responded in a timely manner, and the full proposals are on our website, if anyone's interested in taking a look at those. Both firms would create a list of minimum criteria for a remodeled structure, visit eligible sites, reduce the number of sites to study to two, do a comprehensive study of those two sites, and then recommend one site to pursue. Additionally, each firm recommends also considering a new construction option to compare against the remodeled building. The current price proposal from Harriman is $111,854, and the current price proposal from Port City is $63,700. The selection committee slightly favors the Harriman proposal due to having a local project manager, Amanda Jondro, with whom the city has another successful project, and their public safety consultant, Rob Manns, has worked on the project with Artifacts and has historical knowledge of what we're looking for. Port City has also been involved in prior public safety projects in Caribou and were helpful to the city when we applied for the CDS request for the fire department facility improvements. They have a lot of experience of working with communities to find solutions for their public safety needs, and their proposed cost is lower. Port City did not originally include a schedule, but when requested, the schedule submitted is comparable to the one submitted by Harriman. So I don't know if everybody's had a chance to take a look at some of the information that we've provided.
Can I ask a question really quick? Is this, this price, and I'm sorry if this is included somewhere, but does that include the new versus the existing buildings, or would that be an additional fee?
It's gonna have, it's not gonna have a complete design of a new, a new building, but it's gonna say, based on your budget and your programming needs, you could afford, based on the budget and your programming needs, this is the size facility that you could afford.
Gotcha.
It's not going to have, like, you know, a complete, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just basically a cost estimate for comparison.
Yeah, for comparison, so you can say, okay.
This would be preferable because this is a brand-new building for this much less, or this is gonna be a better, I got you, okay.
Let's see, because I was gonna ask similar questions, so that we're still looking at new and existing in the same.
We're primarily looking at existing.
Existing, okay.
And it was just basically saying, it's gonna cost you $5 million to renovate, it could cost you $8 million to do new if you reduced it to this size, or something like that. So we're just trying to make sure there's no additional questions once they get to a point.
To present options, basically.
So it's a complete open hand? There's no restrictions? I mean, whatever, whatever numbers come up, it's gonna be whatever numbers come up, we'll go left or right from there?
Are they being based on locations that are already found, or are they just doing, like, a fictive location, like, oh, if you find a location that might work for you, it would cost this amount to build? Are they gonna find a location?
Yeah, it'll be based on locations.
Actual, okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out, too. What, how much information will we get?
So it's interesting, because when we put out the request for proposals, we didn't have that in there. But we found that when Harriman gave their proposal, which you all have a copy of that, they included that, that they felt to do the project justice you really needed to look at. Okay, this is what it's gonna cost you if you're gonna go remodel, and this is kind of the size and scope if you decided to do new within your budget. What's interesting is, unknown to Port City, when they came back with the question, when we sent them questions and they sent back the answers, they also mentioned that in their answers. So it may be more of an industry standard to say, here are your true options. This is what it would be new, this is what it would be remodeled, you know, but if it's new, it's gotta be this size, and these are kind of your programming limits if you're doing new construction.
We didn't, we didn't ask for that in the RFP, so that was on their own initiative, which isn't bad. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but do we really want to spend those resources on something, we're just coming off a very long design process, but we had very detailed cost. So, you know, I don't know. What was, what was the feeling of the committee on that?
I mean, we had, I mean, Jan, do you want?
It's just a cost estimate. They're not doing any kind of, they're saying, okay, 800,000 square feet, or 90, excuse me, 12,000 square feet, or 8,000 square feet, or whatever happens to be, you could do it for X dollars. I think that's all it's gonna be, is a comparison number. The other.
I guess I'm saying, I think we already have that information, very recent information.
We do and we don't, because we know what it is for this, but we don't know what it might be for this, you know, something smaller. And I think the intent is, we don't know what we don't know yet. We get into a building, and we, you know, narrow it down, and we could find out there's something structurally important that we need to take care of, and it's gonna cost X more dollars, or whatever. I think it's just a matter of, do you really want to spend this money renovating a building, but we almost gotta tear it down completely to rebuild it, or something like that? I don't know. We just don't know what we don't know.
Have we identified, have we internally identified those properties we want to look at? We want to ask them to look at?
We have a list.
We do have a list.
We have a list.
What are those properties?
I don't have the list with me, but I can email it to you.
Okay.
And that, it's been derived from people stopping in and saying, I have a building, put it on your list. People calling in, hey, I have a building that's gonna be available then, can you put it on your list? So we've been compiling that list. Some of those people want that to stay confidential, you know, the property is on the list for now, because they may be occupied buildings, or they are currently operating a business. But the first step is to develop what the minimum criteria is, because on that list, there could be buildings that don't meet the minimum criteria for, like, the lot size, road access, having public water, public sewer, the size of the building or ability to build on, you know, to that building. So the first step really is to get minimum criteria, so you can weed those out that may be not feasible to remake that into.
So when Artifacts did that study back in 2018, they looked at a city hall, right? Seitel Building, and another building on Sweden Street, 42 Sweden Street, right?
Yeah, I think where the Children's Museum is now.
Right, exactly.
I believe they looked at that building.
So I guess my question is, are we planning to revisit that first option where they looked at allowing the police station to have this entire municipal building and then relocating the administrative offices somewhere else?
We're looking at new buildings that might be a new potential that were not available back then when they did that study.
Right, and that was done by a different contractor, but those reports would be available to them if they wanted to review them and say, okay, we concur, or, you know, we think you should take another look. But honestly, the footprint of this lot was one of the biggest issues on that report, and that didn't get any better. You know, and there's not any way to get it any better.
I looked through that old study, and I thought, yeah, there are some drawbacks, but it's a, in concept, it's a good concept if we could make it work. So I was just curious as to whether that was gonna.
I mean, they'll have full access to all that. I mean, actually, most of the public, I mean, there are parts of that study with relation to this building that were redacted for safety purposes, but for the most part, that stuff is all online, you know, that's anyone could look at, but certainly, this contractor would have access to those studies, too.
So I guess, the obvious question is, what did the committee, the selection committee see in the Harriman proposal that would warrant paying twice as much for the same service? I mean, it's not a slight difference, it's twice as much, nearly twice as much. Can you give me any insight as to what the rationale was?
Well, I tried to put that in the memo, which was having the local project manager, which we already have a project going that has been very successful. And also, their public safety subconsultant, Rob Manns, has been involved with the project as a subconsultant for Artifacts. So he has been through a lot of these meetings, and really, and was involved with, originally when Artifacts did the space planning and programmatic layouts of the building. So the committee felt that there was some value to that as well. But agreed, and that's, I mean, it's right in here in black and white. I mean, there's, there's, there is a big cost difference, and that's why it's in the memo. So, you know, we're being transparent about that. There, there is a big cost difference, and again, the proposals are online. If someone, you know, wants to read them, we are being fully transparent about all of that. But that was, and we, we're very fortunate, we have two great options, you know, as it says in the memo. Port City has also been involved in prior public safety projects, and it was Port City that helped me with the CDS application when we applied for that a couple of years ago. They were the ones that helped me with that, so.
Yeah, I agree, both the proposals were very good.
I feel, I feel that, you know, it's something for the council to discuss. I mean, the, the committee, we're just very fortunate that we have two good options. There are times we put out requests for proposals and have no good options, and we're very, very fortunate here that we do have, we have two good options here.
Obviously, I'm concerned for the impact to the taxpayers of paying twice for, you know, twice as much for something that another provider can, can do just, just perfectly well. I was hoping that there was, there would be something compelling in your discussion tonight that convinced me otherwise.
Well, you have other people here that could also speak to that. I'm just, you're asking for a general sense. I'm the one who gathers up the comments and brings it in a very general way.
Anybody else on the selection committee in the room?
Yeah, of course.
Jan.
We have three councilors on.
Any, anything to add on that?
I, from sitting in the meetings, feel like the majority of the committee felt that Harriman was probably the best option, and a lot of that does have to do with the fact that Rob Mann has been on this project from the beginning and understands what our community's looking for and what the needs of our officers are. So I think that that was a really big thing for us. It was, I was, you know, it was like that for the two, I mean, either one would have been fine. Port City, I like a lot, and they've done a lot of buildings, and they're very good. And Harriman, a good portion of that was because there was a representative in Caribou plus Rob Manns. I mean, if you had ever met him, if you knew him, or whatever, or worked with him, you know, he is, he is so knowledgeable, and he came with great references at the time that we were using them. And that little bit tipped me over to the other side of Harriman. But either one, you know, it's just that having Rob Manns there, he is an asset. So that's why I went with that.
But that's also why I felt like it was important that the councilors all had their original proposals. So you have a chance to really go through, because there are some things, you know, in the proposal that don't translate to a conversation, which is, you know, looking at their past projects, looking at their staff. One of the questions that we asked Port City was about, they had a lot of projects listed, but we wanted to know, you know, what were the ones that were most similar to this project? And, you know, it sounds like in a lot of cases, though, when people start looking at existing buildings, they decide to go with new construction. And I think that was one of the reasons why we ended up with two proposals that said, okay, we'll give you what you're looking for, which is looking at existing sites, but we also know what your budget is, and this, you know, we can give you an idea of what could be delivered.
No, this, this, this has to be our first step.
Yeah.
And, but I, you know, as I've said before, I, I'm not sure I have a lot of confidence if this will really yield anything, but we have to do this as a first step. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you all. I appreciate it.
And do you have anything to add, Jan?
No, I think I covered everything. I, I do want to say, when, when I went through the first one, I went Harriman, saw the price, and then I went through Port City, saw the price, and went, well, wait a minute, what did I miss? So I went back, and I actually done the RFP out, and I got it laid in side by side. I said, okay, make sure everybody answered the questions that they were asking for. I want to make sure no one missed anything. And the biggest thing I could find was the schedule. It was the schedule. Of course we did, but there was no cost to that. But, so, we did go back through and look at them point by point to make sure that both firms were, were answering.
Okay.
What are the wishes of the council?
I would make a motion to accept the proposal from Harriman in the amount of $111,854 to move forward with the site selection for a new police station.
I second it. A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I actually think I will weigh in on just a little bit, because obviously, there is a discrepancy in the pricing. But I've had the opportunity recently to sit in on a lot of these different committee selections, whatever you want to call them, but to see these different proposals put forward and look between these companies, and they're great. We're excited, because we're getting a lot of good companies applying and, and requesting to have business with us, and that's, that's terrific. But usually, there's somebody that stands out above the others. And for me, this has been such a long, tedious project that has stopped and started, and stopped and started. I just really, I trust that the committee is looking for somebody that's gonna deliver something quality, and I think that we really just need to be moving forward. So it's been a lot of setbacks there. So, I mean, I think that if everybody was in unison, that this is a, the company that really stood out to them, that, that makes sense to me in the sense that I've been able to do it from this side, too, with other companies. And, yeah, maybe the other company could still perform something, but would it be to the same level? I'm just not sure. I mean, I'm gonna leave some of that expertise to the people who were there in the room and, and saw the companies for themselves, so.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo that, too. I was gonna say the exact same thing, you know, that you guys have looked at this, the selection committees looked at, I've served on a lot of selection committees, I know what's involved in all of that. I know the process is, is correct and, and basically consistent and, and all that. And my experience has been, when you have a situation like this, where you have two costs, like widely separated costs, you can't be only suspicious of the high one, you have to be a little bit suspicious of the low one, and say, okay, what's going on here? And I've brought that up in other selection committees before, it's like, and I've warned against, okay, watch out for, you know, this may not be reasonable. So, again, I, I trust the, the selection committee's recommendations, so I'll support this.
Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8C is a bid opening for audit services, and Carl, did you want to speak about this at all? Thank you.
Evening, Madam Mayor, Council, Andrew Thompson. Page 22, we did go out to RFP for auditing services for the next three years. In case you're unaware, Felch and Company, our auditor retired, and they weren't bringing another auditor in. So they gave up actually quite a few municipalities around the area. And this company, RHR Smith, has picked up most of those communities that Felch has, has let go. So they were the only bidder, and the prices are reasonable, and their scope of work and plan, field work and preparation all match what we were looking for. So I highly, they do come highly recommended. entertain any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
They do offer the single audit for grants over $750,000 as well, which Felch wasn't able to accommodate either, so.
All right, what are the wishes of the council?
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the bid from RHR Smith and Company for 2025 through 2027, as specified in the package.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio? Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, item eight D is an appointment for the Caribou Housing Authority Board of Directors. Lisa, did you want to talk on this one? Okay, um, so I can just share with everyone. The Caribou Housing Authority currently has one vacancy on its Board of Commissioners, which needs to be filled due to a member who moved out of the area. So there has been one application received, and the request would be for them to be appointed to the Board of Commissioners, and that would be Meredith Kilpatrick, and the term ends on December 31st of 2027.
I'll make a motion to accept Meredith Kirk, excuse me, Meredith Kirkpatrick for the, or Kilpatrick for the term ending December 31st, 2027. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Item number nine is public hearings and possible action items, and under nine A, we have a public hearing for the DEP Brownfields Revolving Loan Fund at Bird's Eye. And that is on page 25 of your packet. Penny, did you want to talk a little bit about that?
Uh, sure. So last year, we applied for, um, funding from the Maine DEP through their revolving loan fund to leverage money that we had set aside. It's, it's called a revolving loan fund because you can get half of it as a grant, half of it as a loan. And we had the funds available to do our half that would be loans, but we just have to go through the program if we're going to get it done for half of the money we have set aside for this. So we were successful in that application, and this is a required public hearing during that process. All grants have a process that you have to go through with having public hearings, getting public input, and all that needs to be reported with the grants. And so we're fortunate that we have our QAP, Michelle Hershey, here, who can answer any questions. We also have a copy in the packet, beginning on page 26 of the APCA, the Analysis of Brownfield's Cleanup Alternatives. This is a small area of PCB soils. So this isn't, um, you know, a, a building or something we're taking down. This is just remediating some soil, so that this can be just another step to get this ready for development.
Okay, thank you. So I will open the public hearing at 6:31 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak?
Do you mind if I jump up?
Absolutely, please do.
Part of the whole formal process for the APCA, and I'll try not to use a million acronyms. It is the Analysis of Brownfield's Cleanup Alternatives. So basically, whenever there's Brownfield's monies that's being used, you have to make sure that, um, you're looking at all your options for cleanup. We have three options that are outlined in the APCA. Um, the, there's always the no-action alternative. That's just leave the PCB soils, and they continue to be a risk to human health and the environment, and that's obviously not ideal, but it doesn't cost anything. So, um, the second alternative, um, that we looked at was actually a cover system. That was about $5,000. And then, um, the third option, which is, um, removal, muck and truck, just dig it up and haul it away. Again, it's a very small area. We're talking 25 feet by 25 feet by two feet down. It was a padmano transformer, part of the Bird's Eye operations, um, obviously just had some leaks over the years, um, when they were in operation. Um, it is very low-level PCBs, um, does not exceed like commercial guidelines or anything like that, but to have a clean bill of sleep for this property, um, it does exceed EPA standards for high occupancy use, um, so we should get it out of there. Um, and that, that meets the cleanup goals by removing the contamination. And that cost for everything, including confirmation sampling after, to make sure that we've got it all, um, is about $42,000. So it is, it is more. It is certainly more, but it's something that, um, it will take care of it, and we won't have, and that, then the site will be ready for redevelopment, completely clean. So, um, that was it. Any questions from the public or anything?
Is there a decision that we have to make tonight on that?
Uh, no, there's actually no decisions or anything like that. It's basically just letting the community know that this is what we're hoping to do. So we might have missed our window for this winter. Maybe visibility isn't so good right now, but, um, if not, it'll be first thing in the spring, so. And I'll be there to babysit. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I will stay for the rest of this, but, okay.
Okay, perfect.
I love what you guys do. Thank you, Caribou. I'm so honored to be a citizen of Caribou. You guys are great.
Well, we love what you do, so. Anybody on the council have further discussion about this?
No.
Okay.
Glad to see it happen.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:35 PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you very much, Michelle.
Okay, item number 10 is reports by staff and committees, and our first report will be from our finance director, Carl, come on up.
Good evening again. My report is starting on page 34. I'll be going on page 35. So, financial report as of October 31st, 2025, assets on hand was $17,866,623.37. Cash on hand, $4,763,725.26. Three quarters of the way down the page, 2025 tax receivables. We collected taxes in the month of October of $2,807,769.6. And we still have outstanding $7,026,847.35 of commitment. So far, through the end of October, we've collected 34.4% of our overall commitment. Next line, 2026, we received $6,309.69 in the month of October for our 2026 tax payments, prepayments, totaling so far $9,849.73. Moving over to page 37, liabilities for the month came in at $11,980,132.29. Moving over to page 40, our fund balance at the end of the month was $5,886,491.8. Moving over to page 42, our expenses for the month. Under the current column, we have $1,026,31.15 for a year-to-date percentage of 77.9% to our overall budget, which is 5.4% decrease. Moving over to revenues on page 47, our revenues for the month under current came in at $824,745.1. Year-to-date percentage-wise, we have collected 86.6% of our overall budget, and we are two-point, uh, 3.2% above budget through October. Excess for October was $191,116.19. Year-to-date, excise, we've collected $1,544,927.7. We're currently over budget by two, 3.2%. Revenue sharing came in at $298,668.52. Year-to-date, we're at $2,299,206.69. We're over budget by 10.4%, or about $254,000 through October. Moving over to our graph for the month on page 52, we are highlighting, um, revenue sharing. Over the last six months, as I reported revenue sharing, and we are over five of the last six months compared to last year. And kind of surprising with the government shutdown, that October actually was a high month. That kind of surprised me because I thought that people would be buying less during the shutdown, but that didn't happen. We'll take our percentage. That is all I have for the October report. If anyone had any questions?
I just have one question, and it's a tiny, tiny thing, but I'm just, and I think maybe we've even discussed this before, and I'm just not remembering, but for the Caribou Trailer Park, um, account 61, why are, why have we overspent there? What's, what are we spending on there?
So we do have insurance, um, there, and I think there's still utilities there.
Yeah, we have to keep, um, electricity there to run the pump for the, like, for water. And also, I think there's even some airport lights that are on that account.
Cross wire.
Right, the mobile home park is actually part of the, the airport.
Right.
For another year, we might look at maybe combining the two.
That's what I was wondering, if we could roll it in or, yeah, okay.
So we've been a whole year now with no mobile homes in there.
Right. Any other questions for Carl?
I'll make a motion to accept the financials as presented. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, item 10B are the November 4, 2025 election results. Danielle, would you like to share that with us? Or I can just say that you have the election results in your packet? Okay. Anybody have questions about the election results?
No.
Yeah, I can announce them. I'm announcing them. Um, so question one was a citizens initiative, and we had 926 yes votes and 981 no. Question two was another citizen initiative vote, and we had 980 yes votes and 925 no. For the city of Caribou municipal election, for the city council, we had Dan Bagley come in at 1,042 votes, Lori Nightfair at 1,130 votes, and Benjamin Tucker at 665. So the two seats that went to the council were Dan Bagley and Lori Nightfair. For the school district, RSU 39, 371 votes went to Bethany Anderson, 637 to Jacob Boprey, 330 to Amanda Jondro, and 310 to Christina Peterson, and so Jacob Boprey took the one seat for RSU 39. And then under the Jefferson Carey Memorial Hospital Fund, um, there was one person, and that was Roger Susie, excuse me, that, um, came in with 1,551 votes. Okay, next on the agenda is the city manager's report.
So I actually have Eric is going to come give you some updates about some things in lieu of the city manager's report. So we're going to have the Eric report instead.
All right. We'll take the Eric report. Sounds good.
Community and economic development. We've got a lot of things going on. One of the hot toppings in town is still the Fort Street Bridge while Eric is getting things. Yes, and so I reached out again to Maine DOT because we're into November. We still have nothing in writing from them, um, as a follow-up when we had the PowerPoint. They've now decided they're not going to send the PowerPoint because the person would need to tell people what's on the slides. But they are trying to plan for an online public meeting, perhaps on October 17th. I have asked for an in-person meeting, so they are going to get back to me. That was last week, so I'll have to bug them again this week and see where we are, because this online meeting, I don't have any kind of time. I don't have any kind of format. I've been promised, you know, some kind of a briefing sheet or something that we can load to the website, because we do have a page on our website devoted to the Fort Street Bridge, and we've been telling people when they call, which is a lot. Check the website, because as soon as we get something, we will have it loaded there. And they'll say, well, can you just tell me? No, because I don't want to be responsible for not telling someone. So we're putting everything online. Of course, we'll share it on city social media, too, because this is something that is really concerning to a lot of people. And, um, Eric, have you been talking about that at planning board also? Yeah. So that's what, like, the big hot topic is the Fort Street Bridge, and it continues to be. So I don't really have an update, except that I'm trying to light fires under them to get something, get some, some information out to our citizens. And, um, I'm, I'm really unfortunately not getting anywhere. So Eric, are you ready to talk about some of the great things going on, including a housing, um, meeting that we're having tomorrow?
Yes, um, thank you. Again, Eric Sanderson, Economic Building Specialist. The city has been working with Matrix Design, uh, which is, um, a consulting firm based out of Arizona, and they have offices in Florida as well, um, on the housing needs assessment and action plan. Right now, we're currently starting the needs assessment, and as Penny mentioned, there's a meeting tomorrow night, um, which is open to the public, and we're hoping to get some really good feedback about what folks are experiencing, experiencing in town in terms of their housing, um, what some of the issues are, what they might want to see. Matrix has been incredible with coming up with graphics. Um, they have images for people to react to of what you might want to see, what you might not want to see, so people can put red dots and green dots and yellow dots and all sorts of things like that. They're going to have all kinds of boards about what it's, excuse me, what exactly a housing needs assessment is, um, including finding out who lives in Caribou, what's next, how the market's changing. And then they also were able to, um, do a lot of digging through the census, through some of our, um, our existing planning documents and what we've learned through other reports and plans, um, looking at the amount that people put towards rent or towards their mortgage, um, and kind of how that stacks up in comparison, uh, with Maine and Aristoc County. We were just emailing with them today. They're going to be doing a existing housing stock inventory, including age of existing stock and how that might affect how we move forward, um, with different policy solutions that the city could consider. I think the last thing I'll mention about the meeting tomorrow night is that, um, it's five o'clock here in council chambers. One of the things that, uh, Matrix will also print out is a big board that has, um, a bunch of policy statements or, uh, I guess, um, ways that we can, um, either grow or reduce or, uh, promote more affordable housing in town and see kind of how residents feel about that, whether they agree, they disagree, they're neutral on it, they're not sure. And that's really going to inform the study moving forward. So Matrix has been really great to work with. We have a really great group of stakeholders and a great group, um, on the planning committee for this, so, um, everybody's welcome to attend. I did bring, um, some cards, which I'm sure some of you have seen or gotten in the mail to pass out. There is a QR code here with a, um, link to a survey, um, that Matrix has designed for the city, um, and I don't think anybody's lying, so I'm just going to, uh, this. So that's going to, the survey's going to be open, um, throughout the length of the study, but we're just kind of, um, it's going to be open for the length of the cer, uh, the study, but, um, this is just kind of an initial getting it out, promoting it. And this is going to be a really good study for the city, um, and really give us a clear idea of what the city's needs might be and how we can go to inform, inform policy decisions moving forward. So it's going to be a month-long process, but this is really the first public step in creating the housing action plan, uh, needs assessment, and then, um, in the springtime, we'll move on to the action plan. So with that, I'll, yeah.
So back when the city council considered proposals, uh, the council wanted to make sure we had in-person stakeholder meetings, and again, just like when we were talking about the Brownfields RLF grant, most of these grants, we really have to prove that we are getting public feedback, that we are involving the stakeholders in our community with spending these federal dollars. So this housing, uh, study actually is being funded, um, through a housing opportunity program grant through the state of Maine. So we need to prove to them that we are getting public input on this. So bring a friend, um, tell somebody about it, um, and if someone can't make it, have them at least scan the QR code, take the survey. Because the more information that we have, it also looks good for us when we're trying to get, you know, more grant funds for other studies. And... And as you've heard me say repeatedly for four years, if we have good planning documents, that's how we're going to get these grants to fund the priorities that this council sets. And that's what we have really worked hard to do. Staff has really tried to seek funding for the projects that you've identified as being important. And knowing what we have for housing stock, try to have an action plan to increase that. There's a lot of communities looking at that, but if Caribou can be the one to actually to take the time to do this exercise properly, get a proper plan, implement the plan, then we're going to be a step ahead of these other communities that are trying to do similar things. And I'm excited, as is Eric, to, to, to work with these folks. We get emails from them all the time, can you send me this, can you send me that? Eric has been looking through all of the archives on the P drive for any kind of mapping, any kind of zoning, anything he can send to them. Their email this morning, I think, is an action item for me and I'm going to have to figure that out because I've, I have done database extracts before that all, it sounds like they want another one for this, the age of the, of the housing stock that we have. And I will work on that. So bring a friend, bring two, come tomorrow, please.
And Lisa with the Housing Department has been incredibly helpful as well. She's been able to rally a lot of our stakeholders and people that we work with as landlords. So it's really a collaborative effort on the city side. We have a really great team put together, so there are plenty of people who are interested in living and building in Caribou and we're really excited to bring them all together.
Every person who buys a house, builds a house, they're investing in our community. And the taxes they're paying on that property is what we spend a lot of time, you know, as elected officials figuring out, where, how are we going to spend that? How are we going to invest it to give citizens the services that they need? And if we can get more of those investors, we can grow the tax base. And at the end of the day, this is what a lot of these projects are about, is having the right planning projects so that we can open up areas for development, grow the tax base, lower the taxes for everyone while maintaining the same level of service.
I'm finding that we really have to emphasize that message more because I get a lot of feedback from the public who do not understand.
Yeah, I know.
And nothing against them, but I find myself explaining it over and over again. Well, the only way out of this is to increase that tax base. And this is the purpose of events, economic development, all of the riverfront, all of these things that we're engaged in, it's all about growing, not just to grow, but to increase that tax base to lessen the burden on all of the rest of us.
Right, and you're exactly right because there's a lot of people that call and they don't have all the information because they're busy living their life, you know, and that's why they elect their, and they put their trust in their elected officials to look after that. But it is sometimes, especially with these planning documents and planning programs, it's hard for them to see that they all, it all fits together, like, you know, we have all these different cogs, like trying to turn out this increase in the tax base. And this council really has been very visionary in saying, we are willing to put our money where our mouth is. We are willing to establish planning programs so that if we have someone who has the means to invest in our community, we can say to them, okay, we've identified these places where what you can, want to do can be put. And, you know, I guess I would say that when people are complaining, you know, or asking a lot of questions. And we really try to put a lot of this online. But they can also reach out to myself, they can reach out to Eric if they have questions too about these different initiatives that we have going. But at the end of the day, the city, the City Council has said, our big priority is increasing the tax base. So everything that we're doing and the dollars we're spending is about increasing the tax base. And this is what it's about.
And to echo what Counselor Bagley had said about making sure that we have all these things in place and really having these planning documents to make Caribou a place that there want, there needs to be, wants to be private investment where people want to come in and build something or do. That was really talked about at length at the Riverfront Committee, the Riverfront Master Plan Public Hearing, not last week, but the week before. I think one of the big things we heard from the public there was really good, putting everything in place so it's, it's ready for someone who might want to come in and say, oh, I want to have my restaurant down here or my business or whatever it might be. So it's, it's, on many fronts, there's a lot of good things going on in Caribou.
Right, and there's a lot of excitement and we saw that at the Riverfront Meeting. We had Counselor Bagley, Counselor Lovewell, were both there. And I don't know about you, but I really felt like there was a lot of good positive energy there. And we have people that really are very bullish on Caribou's future. And, and it was a wide range of ages, income level. I saw people there I've never seen at public meetings. Like usually it's like, as, as we say with economic development or in City Manager land, the STP, same 10 people. But there was a lot of people that I had never even seen and I went up to introduce myself because I had never seen them at a meeting before. And that's, you know, when people, when we're seeing that, we know that we're getting, you know, the efforts of Eric and also Bethany Zell, who does our social media, they're reaching people and they're reaching different people.
Did we get a count? I looked at maybe 50, 60, 70 people?
Wow.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think I counted like 38.
Yeah. It was, it was a good turnout.
It was a good turnout.
They filled just about every seat in the room.
Yeah, I think they had to drag out more chairs.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had good snacks.
We like snacks.
Why don't we get snacks?
I could bring you snacks, I almost brought you snacks. Actually, I gave, I gave Eric snacks.
I don't have to do a suit anymore, so you're good.
So does anybody have any questions for Eric? I feel like I've editorialized.
I do, I just want to, actually, this isn't a question at all, but to, to kick back on the bridge thing, I, I've been getting surveys from DOT, I don't know if other people have been getting them, asking for input on that.
No.
On social media.
Haven't gotten any.
So yeah, yeah, I haven't taken it, but I was like, ah, it's just popping up on social media.
That's the one on the press, on the press.
Oh, it's not, it's not, it's not ours. Okay, I assumed it was ours, I'm sorry, I just saw that.
Trust me, they don't dare send us.
I thought, that was crazy, I was like, oh, this is cool, like they actually are taking, never mind, ignore. Cut that out, I was all excited, thinking we were being listened to here.
Yeah, so of course, yeah, so of course I don't have social media, but I rely on other people to bring things to my attention. And I think it was on a Sunday, I get this text from, from our city clerk that says, have you, like, how come we don't, you know, we haven't known this? Because she knows, and I've said, you know, at our staff meetings and things like, why not? Because other staff who are here today, they're hearing about, you know, the bridge. And so when I looked at her screenshots, it did say about the wildlife management, you know, that crossing.
You don't know how bad it was for me to hold myself back when I saw that on social media. Oh, boy. I had a few things to say about them, like, don't worry about that bridge, let's go back to the other.
And I think they're going to be very surprised when they do have a public meeting.
Well, I heard the other day that.
I don't know.
I don't know either, how we would, I don't know what we're going to do.
Well, maybe, I mean, if you have residents that, you know, hear out the DOT, hear what they have to say at a public meeting, but then if they're still not happy with that, contacting our delegation, writing letters to the editor.
That's exactly.
You know, things, things that they could do after hearing out the DOT's side.
Yep, they're trying to figure out how much it's going to cost them, you know, to reimburse some things and stuff like that. And I said, well, you know, that's ridiculous because it'll probably cost them more than it would to take the extra money to, and the extra time to do it and keep part of it open.
It almost makes more sense at this point in time, if you look at all the inputs and all the things that are going around and, you know, associated with it, is if they would leave the dang bridge and build a new one right alongside of it.
That's what I've said.
And then just simply at that point, you, you've, you've maintained your open, you know, causeway to get materials and products back and forth, but they apparently don't see it that way.
So I'm just going to say.
Interested to hear what they have to say.
Yes, when, when the meeting is announced, people need to let their voice be heard.
I'm sorry, we need to let Eric's voice be heard.
I'll be, I'll be quick, but I did want to highlight a lot of the great work we've been doing to plan for Small Business Saturday. So as Counselor Lovewell can attest to, we've been meeting since the end of August, early September, getting together vendors, organizing a location, coming up with things for people to do. And we are really excited to be kicking this off on Saturday, this upcoming Saturday, November 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then again, an evening event from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, which is ages 21 and up. There's a $10 cover charge for that, so you need to bring your cash if you want to come. But we'd love to see you.
Bring your ID, 21 and over.
There's going to be music, there's going to be an ice sculpture demonstration, there's going to be food vendors, festive holiday shops, all from in Caribou. So it's going to be a really great day to celebrate local Caribou businesses and everything our community has to offer.
This, this Saturday?
Yep, this Saturday, the 22nd. Yep, and then for Small Business Saturday is the following Saturday, November 29th. We are having, the chalets will still be set up behind the Caribou statue from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And we'll have a whole new set of vendors, we'll some overlap, but not a whole heck of a lot. And they're from, you know, retail, you have food and beverage vendors. It's, it's really going to be a day to celebrate our local businesses. We've been, I've been knocking on doors and talking to local, local entrepreneurs and businesses and in organizing this year's holiday ornament, we have a few hundred ornaments that we're going to be giving to folks who go to, I believe we're doing eight or 10 businesses. We already have about 15 to 20 that want to participate, so I'm hoping to get those numbers bumped up as I do some more door knocking in the next week and a half. But if you know anybody that owns a business or if you hear of anybody that wants to participate, have them reach out to us and we can get them. We're doing a really cool idea for a passport book this year, so that'll be all these businesses in the passport book and you go and you talk to them and you, you might get a discount here or there or a free something or something like that. And it really will get to showcase all our community has to offer in town.
And Peter Baldwin, our library and museum director, has been very active. Yeah.
Animated.
Animated.
Stick with animated, it's a far accurate, more accurate description of him.
So he's been very involved and animated with the Small Business Saturday. And again, we want, we're having a lot of fun things and we want people to be out. But again, it's about people supporting our local businesses, keep people, keep as much money as we can in our community and we just hope people will first try to shop local, you know, this holiday season.
And we do recognize that it is the end of November, December, so there will be heaters. There are some indoor activities, sleepers graciously, I believe, donated some chestnuts for the evening event, that's 21 plus to do roasted chestnuts and there will be mulled cider. Really, there's a, Created Up North is going to be doing a pottery, a pottery event as well. So there's really going to be a lot to offer, the 22nd during the day and then also in the evening and then the 29th, all day, 10 to 5. And then just to overwhelm you a little bit more, we're also doing another event the following Saturday, December 6th, geared a little bit more towards Christmas and the holiday season. But there will be another round of vendors, local crafters, artists, things like that. Children's holiday shop, family-friendly for everybody. That's all I got.
Chief LeJoy, do you want to talk about what they're doing at the fire station for Small Business Saturday? Also to try to get people in town and. Bring your kid, bring your kid to town, let him get hungry, take him somewhere to eat, you know, spend some money, fill up your car with gas, all those good things.
So typically, the Fire Department is usually heavily involved in Small Business Saturday. We've been trying to do it for the past couple of years. Some positive news, I believe the reindeer will be back this year, so that'll be another addition. We have local businesses right now making donations to make that happen and the volunteers will probably be picking up the rest of that if we can't get our goal on that. Mr. And Mrs. Claus will be at the fire station again this year for the children to visit. There'll be a bounce house in there like we did last year. The chalet rides will be going around with the groomer. I believe Gary's son will be driving the groomer, so the pickup point will be at the Fire Department and we'll do a loop and then, and back at the fire station to depart those people and load another, another group on, so. Smores at the fire station again for the kids, there's going to be letters to Santa, some coloring books to do, so there'll be plenty of activities for the kids to go on. All the while, get through the fire station and seeing the trucks at the same time. And so that always fascinates the kids to be able to look at all that stuff, so.
And then you've got the tree lighting.
Tree lighting, so yeah, Christmas decorations will be going up here soon. We've got them down at the station right now, we're all going through them all, making sure they're all working. We've rewired the tower on the fire station, so that'll be lit up this year. That'll be a, we, we've made some additions to that, so it should be very, very nice to look at. And then we're going to be decorating the tree here probably tomorrow night, getting that ready to go, so.
And Chief LeJoy, would you mind just sharing with everybody what time that tree lighting is? It's a little different this year, I think, right? Do you remember?
I do not remember.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I think it's 6:00 PM on the 29th.
That sounds right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Because we proved that she used to do it on 5, but I think they pushed it back just so.
Yeah, just so the community knows, come at 6, or come before then, stay through 6.
So plenty, plenty to do.
Lots of fun things, that's great, looking forward to the Christmas lights.
Thank you.
The volunteers are heavily into this, they're, they're all for the kids.
Good.
Yep, they enjoy doing that for the kids, so.
And can I ask one more question? You guys do a giveaway, a toy giveaway for families that are in need, is there anything that you can share about that? I know there's a lot of hurting families in the community.
So we have our toy project, Caribou Toy Project, that has been staple of the Fire Department ever since I've known and even when it was in this building here, so we've continued on that tradition. So there is applications for families that are in need of toys. They're available here at the city office. And I'm not quite sure what the deadline is, it's usually like a week or two before the Christmas holiday, but.
Very good, so if people need something, they just can reach out here, sorry about that, Danielle?
December 17th.
December 17th?
And it's the same one for the food baskets.
Okay.
I'll have you come up next, Lisa, and you can say that so people can hear it. Trying to think if there was anything else, I wanted to talk about this Small Business Saturday. But again, this is for people to come to Caribou, equate Caribou with Christmas. I got to be Caribou, I got to get my Christmas shopping done. We have some really great retail outlets here, we've got terrific places for people to eat. And, you know, we have all of our departments working together, keep everybody safe, let everybody have fun. It's excellent news that the Caribou will be back in Caribou for Christmas.
And he actually reached out to us.
Oh, good.
Because we were on shore again on their situation, but he enjoys coming up here. I know community before tried to steal the reindeer from us, but they prefer to come right to Caribou, so.
He did say that, I've talked to him different times since he's been down here and he said that, you know, the people in Caribou really appreciate it, they verbalize that to him. And also the kids are better behaved, like they're not trying to get in the pen. I mean, and I'm like, what? And he's like, oh, yeah, we go these places and the parents aren't watching their kids and the kids try to get in there with the reindeer and.
So note to parents, don't let your kids get on the reindeer.
Good, the good, good children list and not the naughty list. So apparently we're still on the good list because he reached out to say the thing.
Talking with Gary Markey, typically where the reindeer are, the chalets are there now, so they're going to probably move that back into the parking lot a little bit, but they're going to make an area there that'll be comfortable for the reindeer and they believe everything will work out really well, so.
Great, thank you.
How do we donate toys to the parade group players?
Yep.
We'll also have giving trees as well, with little ornaments of folks who might need something, so there'll be plenty of opportunities for donations.
Yep, we take donations all the time for toys. Typically now, it's, it's a new unwrapped toy. We used to typically, used to wrap all the toys, but our program coordinator for that now found it easier just to, to let the families get the toys and then wrap them, wrap them as they need, so.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Lisa, would you like to just go and talk about the food and toy baskets, sign up? See if you come, Lisa, you're getting put to work.
So yes, the following up on what Chief LeJoy said, the applications for the toys for tots, not toys for tots, the toys baskets. And for the food, and I believe they're not food baskets anymore, they're gift cards. baskets anymore, they're gift cards, is what they've been doing the past few years. Those applications can be right in the Caribou Housing Authority office. If you can't find us, they're on the table right outside our office and the deadline for that is December 17th. So they need to fill out their applications before that and get those sent to us.
And so they return them to your office?
Yeah, just return it back to us and we'll take them. We give them to the fire department once a week.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Lots of holiday cheer. Yeah. Your city manager should.
Well, that's a good report to have, like that.
I'll take any questions anybody has.
No, but I'll piggyback in on that, since we're talking about everything going on in the neighborhood. VFW is going to be doing their Kids' Christmas Bingo on the, on the 20th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM and you can reach out to Roger Felix and get the parameters of how that works, if you want to like maybe donate time or you want to know how that program works or if you even want to bring folks to the program. Generally as a rule, it's only requires $3 and that's for the kids and that pays for, well, we ask them to bring $3 and that covers the hot dogs, french fries and the soda while they're there, everything else we pick up tab for.
Is that for the 20th of this month or December?
20th of December.
Okay, December. So Roger Felix?
Yep. There'll be more out about it, but since we're throwing out things now, might as well anchor it with the crowd.
I agree, I agree. Thank you, lots of things. Okay, item number 12 is new business ordinances and resolutions. 12A is the automatic lien foreclosure process lien waivers. And Carl, did you want to come up and kick this off for us?
I see that on page 55, I have this upside down and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's good.
I don't know how that happened, but.
So this is our annual waiver foreclosure meeting. I need approval to waive these if that's what you guys want to go through. I just have a couple of quick announcements. The list that we have as of last Wednesday, the 12th, we had 81 unpaid properties. I expect about half of those to get paid. Actually, today, we got payment on 23 of those accounts, so we're down to 58. And as history shows, they have till the 24th. History shows that they usually wait until the last minute to pay, so this list will definitely get smaller. I'm pleased to report too, that last year we waived 59, so we're actually one account less than we had last year. And out of the 59, I've, I and my department have continued to work these accounts. We got 20 of those accounts paid off this year, leaving only 39 properties unpaid with a dollar value around $45,000. And on a $10 million budget, we're at a collection rate of 99.5%. So what we're doing is working. And another reminder, even if you waive the foreclosures on these properties, we still have a year lien on them, so we still have vested interest in these properties, meaning, you know, they, they're not just walking away, we're still hold interest on them because it takes two liens to become foreclosed, so you're only waiving one of the two liens. Also, I'd like just to mention that I encourage the process that we did with Herschel Street in order to get rid of some of these properties. If you, if you remember, we went to the property owner, I believe, and worked out an agreement to acquire the property instead of going through the RFP for a Realtor. That being said, I'll entertain any questions you might have on the list. Like I said, last year we waived 30 of, I asked to waive 30 because they were mobile homes. Accounts on the list this year that we waived last year are 14 of the same familiar ones. Eight of the properties, people have actually deceased and the family members don't want the property. Those, I feel, are the only ones that are going to be hard to get rid of because we can't obviously approach the prior owner and the family members, like I said, they walked away, they don't want the property or we don't know whether to get ahold of them.
Can you just post that or is that, what do you have to do legally to?
So those ones, we would have to go through the cycle of RFP for a Realtor to go through that process if you choose to. I still have a small hope that this legislation will change this law in the future. Not very encouraged right now, but I do have a small hope that this will be changed because it really doesn't work for this area. It works for the coastal properties that have value. Most of our properties are blighted properties and no Realtor really wants to hang their shingle on these properties. I do, that being said, I do have account four, 883, the one that's highlighted in wood. I do have a Realtor that's interested in selling that property and I have a buyer that's interested in buying that property if you, if you choose not to waive that one. Last year we just moved the slate. And then I have one property in green that hits the building only and it's on leased land, so probably don't want to get into that because it's almost like a mobile home. We would have to be paying lot rent if we acquired the building.
I was, I was going to ask you about the lot rent, Carl. Are there, is there quite, quite a few in here that there is back lot rent that the city would be, if you don't know?
I don't, I don't know that because we don't get involved in the tenants' agreements with, you know, I'm assuming you're talking mobile homes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because like some of them, you, you know they're in the same mobile home park and I'm not even sure if, if this park is still.
So the 22 properties or the 23 properties that I mentioned, a majority of those were actually mobile homes that got paid today.
Oh, okay.
So out of the 23 that are, got paid, 22 of them are the mobile homes. So that list kind of narrowed down pretty fast.
Yeah, because I think the.
I can go through the list and tell you which ones are paid if you want.
Oh, no, that's okay. I was just concerned because I know in the past when, before we did a policy of not taking mobile homes in parks.
Yeah.
Because we were on the hook for the.
Well, there is a main state statute that says that we don't acquire someone else's back, so it would only be lot rent moving forward if we acquired the property.
Okay, and you still might get some of that because if you can't get it off of there, destroyed or whatever, so.
Okay, that's good.
It's mobile homes personal property, right? Is that how that works?
In parks.
In parks.
I mean, we still, we tax them. And the, and the bad thing about that is they, if they're there more than 12 months, they would qualify for a homestead and they wouldn't be assessed taxes, but they don't even follow that protocol. You know, it is come in and fill out a piece of paper, but that's the group of people that we're dealing with.
So can you just refresh my memory then? So if they're orange, this is, would be a second year of waiving?
No. The orange is what we waived last year and the reason why we waived those year to year is because 99% of them are mobile homes.
So I'm just wondering, like, how do I know who's two years, who's three years, like that, that kind of thing? Like if somebody hasn't paid in multiple years, is there a way for me to see that?
The yellow ones that go all the way across are the ones that we waived last year. We have, we have, there's 14 of them that we waived in 2024 on this list.
Uh huh, okay.
So any, anyone that's in yellow, like you count 466, we waived that one last year.
Oh, like 194 also, is that right? But it shows red in this, this column, so oh, it's, okay, I see.
Yeah, if it's 194.
So it's also red and yellow.
Right.
Should be orange.
It should be orange, yeah.
Buy one, just get it, the ones that have.
Yeah, no, I, I got you. I understand, I'm just messing with you, but, okay, so.
And then obviously, like I said, I've been working these down and Mr. Baldwin's on the West End, number 1279.
1279, okay.
I have confidence that he will come good with his payment arrangement if you guys choose to waive this foreclosure.
Good.
Like I said, last year we waived the whole slate and we're one, one account less than we had last year. We're currently at $60,000. This says $78,000, but with the, with the accounts paid today, we're down to $60,000.
Question for you.
Yeah.
And just, most of these addresses I, I have no problem with, you know, I, I look down through and I say, oh, I know where this one is, I know where this one is, I know where this one is. Well, this 557 access highway, Penny, we live in that neighborhood. Where, where is that exactly?
That's the old Riverside Motor Court. Not lazy acres, but right beside it.
Coming back towards Dodo, same side. Okay, all right, that, thank you. Because most of the stuff you can go, oh, okay, there's a percentage, you know, you could do something or move something and you get an address and you're like, what the heck?
Yeah, and you can see that when there's several, like, and then.
Yes.
The, the mobile home park itself is account number 1633, 563.
That one got paid today.
That one got paid today. But you can, like, when I was trying to evaluate these and, news flash, I'm getting older, so I have a hard time to like see little things, so I had to make it a big thing. And I wanted to look at, you know, kind of the land and building value on some of these places and also like the total amount owed, like for example, let me find the account number that we had a cleanup action on. Okay, so account 3975, land only. That's 37 Home Farm Road. You can see it only has a land value, no building value, but it has a total amount due of $18,000 and that's because we went through a dangerous building action. So we had to add the cost of demolition. So that's why like this one, you know, was the second committed. And again, and then I decided, well, maybe I need to be looking at what's on our blight list and we have some that over and over again, you know, have been on our blight list.
Yes.
We have some commercial properties on here, which is surprising, including three mobile home parks. Not, I mean, it's, did they also, so TBK also owns Noble, the Caribou Stream.
Yeah, they paid that.
And they paid that one too. So I guess now there's only one mobile home park, which is also, Council Bagley, Council, Council Watson, I all kind of live in the same neighborhood. And West Gate Mobile Home Park is on here too and that's, that's on our list as having unpaid taxes as well.
What's?
2050 is that account and so they owe right now $24,606. So I have a feeling they probably haven't paid anything in four or five years because we've been waiving them for a few years now. And so, and again, it's on the blight list.
That one might be, that might be developed whole property.
Right, so when we're looking at some of this blight, is it something we want to step up and say, okay, we're going to let it foreclose, then as you're saying, go and try to work with the owners to get, you know, a deed.
Do we have to do that with four, forecloses?
You can do them both, but what I have been learning with dealing with Herschel Street is I think it's better to let them foreclose because it opens up more pots of money for us to deal with it because we didn't take any positive action to acquire the property. We're acquiring them through the automatic lien foreclosure process, but we can still clean up the title by going to the owners and trying to get a deed to the property, like we did with the power plants. So the power plants originally was a lien foreclosure, but then I worked with the owners heirs to get a deed to the property so that when it is cleaned up and we want to go forward with any kind of reuse, we have title to that, it's ready for us to get it back on the tax roll or, you know, some kind of public facility there and again, increasing the tax base. And some of these blighted properties, I mean, Seven Water, Seven Water Street, which would be account 3213, I mean, they owe six, over $6,000. They haven't paid in what, Carl, like, again, like five years. Every time we contact them about the fact that they are, it's a blighted property, you know, we just hear, well, we don't have any money to fix it. And, you know, we have, at the council's suggestion, applied for assessment money through Main DEP 128A program, but we don't own the property. But, and so when, while working with them on that project, I've gotten, I guess, more information about how we could make it easier if we did at least have a, it was foreclosed and then we can work with them. Like Seven Water Street, I'm sure that they would convey the property to the city with a deed once we got it picked up, but if we don't get the deed maybe until it's done, then maybe we could reduce some of our liability, but at least we have, you know, it's been foreclosed or whatever. But it's more work for staff and I'm just going to tell you, like, it's around here, people do the work. Like, it's not like AI is going to do all this stuff. I mean, I just went to the ICMA conference and it seems like, you know, every day I sat through at least two AI, AI classes about, it can help you with this, it can get you home on time. My husband made sure that I went to that one. And how AI can help you get home on time. No, really, wizards help. And, but it isn't doing things like this. Like it takes the staff, Carl and the staff in his office, they have to send out these, their, people are calling and it's there, they have to work with them. People are mad. They call the clerk's office and don't want to pay. Code enforcement has to work on these things. Eric and I are working on, you know, managing the grants to clean up these things. Like, it's people that have to do the work. Like, there's no silver bullet. I think we, you know, those of us that have been together for four years on this journey trying to like get this stuff figured out. But we do pick away at it a little at a time, you know, to try to get somewhere. And I think this is our third year, right, Carl, that we've just waived everything because of the state and the actions that they've taken that makes it a lot harder because a lot of these properties, as the finance director has said, are blighted properties that a real estate agent and Council Lovell and I both have real estate backgrounds. You know, it's going to cost us more to have somebody sell it than we're going to get out of the property because it's not anything someone wants to spend their time going over and showing on a regular basis and advertising, you know, for sale. Well, we're, two questions. Where are we with finding a Realtor that will take the whole pot? Because that, wasn't that our suggestion, we, we find a Realtor, but they have to take it all? We have to put it out for RFP. Okay, so we, we want to do that, right, is my understanding? And then second, when do we have to have this decision? Does it have to be made tonight for the foreclosure part?
Yeah, I have to have the waivers to the Red Street by Friday.
Because I, you know, personally, I'd just like to say, I, I'm not, I haven't met a proponent of waiving foreclosure on all of them this whole time. I do think that a lot of them maybe should be to continue to try to collect, but there's some that have just been sitting, they're, the debt is increasing, the blight is increasing and to get them back on the tax rolls by doing something, even if we go in, you know, a little bit backwards at first, if it's back on the back, the tax rolls, we're improving the community because you don't have, you know, somebody's coming in and taking this property and cleaning it up, you're going to have somebody paying taxes on it as much as sitting there. So I think if we can maybe selectively choose some of these properties, I would like to see that. Well, then the next thing is going to be, we're going to have, we're going to have a dangerous building action on several of these. Like, if you decide that that's what you're going to do. Exactly. The next step is, we're going to need to go out for dangerous buildings. We're going to have to get judgments so that we can clean them up, which kind of, I'll just put in a little plug for your next agenda item, which is the 2022 Volvo Rubber Tire Escavator. If we have a piece of equipment in the city that can help us address some of these blight, blighted properties so that when they have time during the summer in the Public Works Department and we can say, okay, during the winter, we went through the dangerous building process with these four addresses and so now that's been, that process is perfected and we're going to, you know, take those down and clean them up.
Because it's cheaper to handle it with staff than it is to contract it out. So, okay, so I have a couple of questions.
So that's just an aside.
I don't want to get too far in the weeds here, but when we talk about West Gate Trailer Park.
Yes.
There was a huge issue with ownership at one point in time.
Yeah, there were some issues.
Is that somewhat clear cut now?
Yeah, I mean, there was a person that owns it. So for a while, when they had that bad fire out there, somebody was claiming that they had conveyed the property, but the deed didn't get recorded, but that's, that's been taken care of. But they're still not paying the taxes, so.
And there's still, and some of these properties on this list, the owner. And there's still, and some of these properties on this list, the owners are definitely not local.
Right.
And haven't been for years. I don't even think they know they have it. And if they deceased in another state, we have no way of knowing that.
Well, I mean, unless we get contacted, you know, by
No, but
But a lot of times, we don't. You're exactly right.
You know, if you're, we don't talk about it here, but if you're last in line, you know, you don't have no other heirs. And you pass, there's no one to notify because they're only gonna deal with what they have locally in that state, not necessarily back here with, with, with us.
Well, like, we have one that is on the Imane Road. Is it the Imane Road that Mrs. Thompson that called?
Way out there.
Yeah, it is.
No, not Imane Road. It's the Belanger Road, the nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah.
This was owned by a man named Fred Thompson, no relation as far as I know. And his widow has called a couple of times and said, like, I'm not paying the taxes on that. And it wasn't in her name. It was like him and his former wife and maybe she died and now he's died. And it seems like every time Carl and his staff send her a letter, we just get a call that she's not gonna do anything, kind of like Water Street. You know, the people are just, you know, walking away from their commitments. And, you know, if we're gonna try to get some of these things back on the tax rolls.
And again, to your point, if we have equipment, if we have personnel, we know we have some, some tipping, you know, through AWS. So we have that. Sometimes the properties fall under, you know, in TIF locations, we can use funds from there. So there, we have things already at our disposal to, to do something about some of these properties. But I, I don't think that just sitting on all of them.
I don't think so either, but I think one of the problems we have is that we're ill-prepared this evening to try to take on this entire list and pick and choose which ones.
No, I, I'm, that's why I asked that question. And I'm, that's unfortunate, cause I also don't know exactly. I mean, I could see the some right off the bat, but I, I don't know.
But I think we have a good plan though.
But he said by Friday? He need to by Friday?
No, we need to make a decision tonight.
Make a decision tonight, okay, okay.
Yeah, I need to have the waivers to the red street by Friday.
But the rea, I think the reality is, is where we want to go though, in conversation. I think that's, we need to start lining that up now to be better prepared.
That's why we have, I was advocated for the committee to figure out, and we've worked, we've not, and talked about some options on this.
Yep.
This is a this is a huge issue.
It is.
It is huge. How do we handle it? Are we gonna pick and choose?
What if we don't?
I'm gonna say, I'm just gonna say no on this because I don't think we should waive foreclosures. That's my opinion on this. And maybe that's not the right approach, but I mean, it's three years into this, we can't just keep going along. The state has mandated what we can do. And obviously, and I like Carl's opinion earlier, as, or as Quall was saying, hey, you know, I'm optimistic that maybe the state will change their mind because they've really tied their hands on this.
I agree.
You know, and it limits what we can do.
Does it require an automatic foreclosure if we don't waive it? I mean, if we say we're not waiving any foreclosures, you have to automatically foreclosure. Can you make a decision case by case?
No, he cannot. And it has to be by the, and you definitely want to waive them on any kind of mobile home in a park.
Yep.
That's too much liability for the city. Cause we've had it happen before, that the council decided not to waive foreclosure on anything.
And how many are those?
And we had, that was
It's a bulk of your list.
Westgate Villa. And they wanted to charge us lot rent for these mobile homes.
Yeah, you said that last year too. You explained that last year.
So we definitely, you know, at a minimum.
We only have one park though, that would, that would be considered, cause the other one paid on the other two parks, correct? So there's only the Westgate that, that you're looking at.
And there's seven mobile homes.
In that park?
One leased building.
Yeah. Bulk of your list is mobile home listings on this.
Well, and again, I think Carl, you feel confident that a lot of these will be paid.
Well, that's why I was asking if he can continue to just work with the owners. If we, if we don't waive foreclosure, but they wouldn't be subject to an automatic foreclosure? Or just automatically threshold minimum foreclosure if we don't waive?
Automatic is, if you don't do something to stop it, it's gonna happen.
Right.
So what, what, the option you have tonight is to stop that process by waiving the foreclosure. If you do nothing, then they automatically foreclose.
They automatically become the city's property.
Yes, and then this, this is headache.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation on that.
The other thing too, that's the bad news, is that if you do foreclose on them, then technically you should be abating the taxes on the books, which becomes an expense to the city.
Yep.
And you've also got the liability on them.
So when you do get ready to sell it, there's no, nothing on the books holding.
I think we should at least, we're gonna have to pick some of them. We have to pick some of them. I mean, in my opinion, we can't, I mean, we're not prepared to, to do them all, but if there's some that are just in our face.
I mean, it's a timing thing. Cause you could pick, you could pick twenty and ten of them could get paid by next Monday, then that, that supersedes it.
Which would be fine.
Yeah, right.
I don't have a problem with that. I literally don't have a problem with somebody paying the taxes. I just wanna take some of these ones that are
I just think
Let's, let's give you a really good example of one that I'd like to talk about, three-one-one-seven. I would like to see that one not be waived.
Which one was that to me?
Three-one-one-seven, three-one-one-seven. And I think everybody knows which property that is. So
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the point in that. If you look at the amount, it's ridiculous. So
Okay, I see that.
Yeah, I, I understand where she's coming from on that one.
Carl, do you think any of these ones that are deceased, like, if we, if we went through the process with them, I mean, do you think any of these are things that could be sold or would we be able to somehow, I mean,
Yeah.
Clean them up.
Like four-eight-eight-three, that one definitely would get sold.
And I think
So the whole concept of that too, is you gotta sell it at fair market value. The guys willing to pay fair market value, but we don't get to keep the money. We have to send the money to the state. So that's another thing. It's like, they want us to do the work for them.
Yep.
But we don't.
We use the example of
We get to keep a five hundred dollar admin fee, but it's not really worth it.
And you gotta keep your taxes too, correct?
Elsewhere did it, just recently. And they did it, they sold, the property was sold. And they gave back the money to the person, to the owners. It was even prior to the state legislature rule. So they opened themselves up, but they only have, I think it was only fifty thousand dollars if they had to pay everyone back for every property they had sold prior to that time. I mean, I follow this pretty well. I mean, it's just a
It's, um, it's, it's unfortunate that the state makes it harder because as I stated before,
Yeah.
It doesn't magically happen. We actually have to have staff that does everything, every task that we're talking about requires time by staff to do.
As you mentioned, you know, if you do the work, we don't even get to, so we have to do all the hard work.
You don't get, you don't get to keep the money.
Fee, I don't know how that works.
I don't know why they did that.
As Finance Director Grant says, like, it's a five hundred dollar admin fee.
Yeah, that's
Well, that's nothing when you have so many hours spent on this.
You have to go, you have to advertise it for like a year. And unless you get fair market value. If you don't get fair market value, then you can kind of get rid of it the way we used to get rid of the line, the process. That was, that worked well, I thought, but
I, I think, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I thought
But if you're talking about four-eight-eight-three, we've got somebody already interested in purchasing that property. And when they purchase that property, we're gonna get our back taxes plus whatever admin fee. Why keep that on this, this roll? Just to be, like, somebody wants the property, nobody's paying taxes, there's three thousand dollars owing. To me, it's just like, that's a no-brainer. I would just go ahead and that's a good way to help this, this person purchase property and get our money back and there's one property, right?
Situation, he actually went to the Realtor and the Realtor contacted me. I don't know if that's
I'm cool with it. I mean, we're gonna contact the Realtors anyway. If that Realtor wants to talk to us about doing a lot more of these, they'll talk to us.
He put on our Q and A.
And nine-oh-eight access highway, also out in the hood for us. That one's got squatters in there. I did recently find out who is squatting in there. And that's not a good situation.
So
But the, but the owner's dead.
Right.
I know, I know.
And that's what I'm wondering about some of these properties with, with deceased owners, if we can just start, you know, if there, if there, if there is any value in those properties, even if that means that we have to go on and tear them down, use our tipping fees, whatever we've got. But, you know, to eliminate that problem, get it back on the tax rolls, whatever. I mean, it's gonna be a little bit of legwork, but it is.
I mean, in this case, it's kind of a nice lot that it's on. If you could clean up all the junk in there and then have somebody put a nice home in there. I don't know.
Okay, so
What is homestead? What does that mean?
Uh, that means that they have a homestead application on the property. So I'm assuming that there's a family living there.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So you might not want to.
Might want to take those.
You'd be throwing them out on the street.
What is this one-eight-one Hardison? Where is that? And who can tell me about that? I guess I don't know that area.
One-eight-one? So the, the owner of that property actually has, I think, four properties on this list. But what, I guess, when I was going through here, he doesn't have a homestead at any of them, but he must live at one of them.
I think those ones get paid like at the
Those get paid at the last minute.
Okay.
If it's, if it's the same one on the
It's a large amount, it's like eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think he'll pay by the twenty-fourth.
Three-three-four-eight, is that gonna get paid? Is it three-three-four-eight on the side? Which way? Okay. Three-three-four-eight.
Right here.
Three-three-four-eight. Yeah, that's a commercial building. I don't know. Have you heard anything from them? Account three-three-four-eight?
Yeah.
Uh, I heard it was going to auction.
He paid it, I think.
Huh?
I think it got paid. I don't think it went to auction. I heard
I wasn't sure.
That it paid. I don't know about that.
I thought it went, yeah. That's the last I'd heard about auction on the twenty-ninth. I think it was.
Even get sold.
Val, I was told Val for bankruptcy. That's putting that on hold for a minute.
Yes.
That's simple enough.
Okay, so
I mean, if they, if they got paid, I would think the first thing they'd want to do is pay the taxes.
Pay the taxes.
We have to.
So the question is, if we move the slate, then you're tied for another year.
Right.
If we don't move the slate, then we're gonna have to sit here tonight and start picking properties.
What about five-one-six-three?
So that owner has, I think, three properties on this list. There's two pieces of land, which is the four-nine-four-oh, five-one-six-three, and I think there's a home also. Is that it? Somebody usually comes in and pays at the last minute?
That one is all the dice.
Okay.
I've had, not conversations this year, but I've had conversations previous year and sometimes he's way up there.
Eighteen forty-two, same owner.
Right.
So if we're going through the list one by one, let's get started.
Well, I, just off the bat, the ones that I've checkmarked for, I would like to see not waived are seventeen fifty-five, twenty-fifty. Is that right? Three-one-one-seven. I don't know what the situation with three-three-four-eight is, but that's
So if you, you, you want to waive them or you don't want to?
I do not want to waive. And
So you're gonna, you want the city to acquire that property?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're trying to talk about.
Squatters?
Correct.
Can this reuse the property?
That's my understanding. Well, yeah, I was thinking that
Square numbers again, let's start.
Yeah, three-one-one-seven for sure. And four-eight-eight-three for sure. Like, if you, I mean, I just think that makes sense.
So four-eight-eight-three is the one you think you could sell that one?
Question on regarding the mobile homes. Which I know in the past, I know, I understand why we do not want to acquire those. But was one of these in here? The actual, somebody owned the mobile home park?
That's what I understood that. That's what I thought.
They own the land.
Those got paid though, right?
There's one, Westgate is not.
Westgate's not.
And that was one of the ones that I just mentioned.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that's
That's the twenty-fifty.
Twenty-fifty, that's the whole.
Three-nine-seven-five, yep. Those are the ones that, I mean, just quickly. And I don't know, like, a lot of these other ones, I just don't know. But what about four-five-seven-three? That's a, that's a big amount.
Not could be. What's that mean?
It's not currently on the list, but could be.
Currently on the blight list, but it could be. Once I, like, started looking at it, it, I have had a complaint of the dumpster that's there. And then looking at the building, like, it's not currently on.
That one got paid.
Oh, that one got paid?
Oh, that got paid?
Um, he paid credit card. I haven't actually received the money.
Okay.
Um, but I should have it by Thursday.
Okay, okay. Cause it was still showing up as
He just emailed me today saying that he paid it through credit card. I don't actually see it for three days.
Okay.
So I can't really, I didn't want to take it off the list until I actually had the phone.
Right.
And then also, also three-two-one-three, that's the one that we've been talking about tonight too.
Right, so that's like Seven Water Street. We also, so, um, three-four-five-eight, two-oh-six Sweden Street, also known as the Yellow House. That is one that is definitely on our blight list.
That would be a good one.
What number is that?
And that one is three-four-five-eight. Um, three-four-six-oh, also on Sweden Street, on our blight list. That one, our police department did relocate a barnyard animal from that
Oh.
Address, which did improve the neighborhood, but
A barnyard?
A larger or small?
A small.
Okay.
Did you say forty-ninety-four?
Um, forty-ninety.
What, what one was that?
The one I was talking about was three-four-six-oh.
Okay.
Um, twenty Pioneer, they are also on the blight list. Um, we usually spend all summer trying to get them to cut their grass and take out their trash. And I don't know that I spent a lot of time on that this past summer, but they are often on that list. And that's three-nine-three-zero. We have a couple of them on Limestone Street, um, three-six-four-six. And, let's see, at Limestone Street, four-one-two-nine, that one was, was waived last year. But, I mean, these are blighted properties. And if you drive by, they're both
They're a mess.
Yeah, they are.
They're a mess.
Remember before the
So on Limestone Street, we have three-six-four-six and four-one-two-nine.
And they're both What about eighty-one Washburn? If he's a deceased, so is that
That one is pretty rough, but I don't think we've had it on the, we haven't had it on the blight list.
It's a really high tax amount, isn't it? Oh, that's not it, sorry. Is it or no?
Well, eight-five-hundred is, is a lot of money. So it must be, this one maybe we have been waiving
Cause they're deceased, it says that, so
Like I said, this is the third year that we've been waiting for the state to maybe work with us on this.
I almost am like, from three-one-one-seven all the way down to four-one-two-nine, almost all of those would be a
You wanna take that?
You say that was a potential sell, forty-eight oh-four?
It's four-eight-eight-three?
That one's got a building on its way.
More building cost than it's worth.
Right, so it was, so the neighbor owns the land. I believe it was a relative that had lived in the home. And then she died, correct?
Supposedly the son is now in that property and the father said that he assumed it was being paid.
Okay.
Yeah, we know what happened to assume.
Yeah.
So I don't know if they're gonna, they may not have put her that
Well, that, I mean, that's quite a lot of taxes that are owed. Like, that makes me think it's, you know, multiple, not just the three years.
Yeah, there might be actually two years on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
So
Two years that need to be paid to get it done.
When I look at that second page, from three-one-one-seven down to four-one-two-nine, just straight in a row, it seems like all of those would qualify, except for maybe this Veronica Street, which I don't know.
Yeah, so that's the person that Finance Director Grant is pretty sure will come in and pay on the twenty-fourth.
Maybe not that one, but every, all the other ones seem like they would be good candidates. Just write down that list.
I don't know how I feel about Seven Water Street. It's quite a liability, given the buildings on either side and what could happen if you were to get in there and start working around it.
Well, that's what Penny said. We have to actually go through the foreclosure process to, in order to open up the funding because she did talk to, right? You talked to
They, they are still going to work with us on an assessment. But, but as far as being able to get money for any kind of cleanup, it may be more challenging. But if, if, if the city council wants to take on, again, whatever you decide to keep is going to be a lot of work. So if you say, okay, we don't really want to work on that one this year, you're giving, like, from what you're talking about, you're going to be giving staff a lot of other things.
Sure I am, yeah, for sure. Yeah. And I, and I don't mind, like, if we can still get that assessment, I can see that. I still consider that property to be a liability to the city, whether we own it or not.
I know. And agreed. It's a very dangerous property. I know, and agreed, it's a very dangerous property, it's going to be a very messy and complicated.
Clean.
A cleanup.
Cause you gotta do EPA, DEP, fishing game, everybody's there.
And again, while protecting both buildings on either side.
The two buildings next door.
Correct, I mean, it's very, it's, it is gonna be very complicated. And if you're gonna waive some, trust me, that will be enough for us to work on.
Okay.
So just so you know, like.
Got you, I do, and I got you.
You make the decisions and we act on those. And whatever you give us to do here for work, we will work on them, and maybe by next year, people will get the message that we're not just waiving everything, and they need to come in and pay their.
I would like to show that too.
There we go.
So I don't know, was there anything on the ones that I said that people are not in agreement with then, besides Seven Water Street, or?
Okay, so you had seventeen fifty-five, twenty fifty. Three one one seven. Mm, one defense.
On the next one.
Thirty-four fifty-eight.
I'm, I'm actually going all the way from three one one seven all the way down to forty-one twenty-nine, but you can exclude Seven Water Street and Veronica Street, so those two.
Okay.
On that line, but I mean, just to make it easier for you to just see straight down the line, cause those are all on the, are blight list.
Okay, so making this a motion.
Sure.
I don't know about three three four eight either.
Just if you're gonna make a motion.
Oh, a motion? Well, I was just trying to get a consensus before I try to make a motion.
Okay, so, since we're, we're getting ready to get, tie this up and make a motion, you have, you have a few of these that are land only. I think those should be automatically added to the list.
I, I agree with that a hundred percent, I'm totally for it, unless they, there's a reason not to.
Because, you know, looking at that, from that perspective, some of these may be, some of these may be acquired by neighbors if they're able to acquire them.
Yep.
I know if I was, I know most of this is rural, but if I was downtown and all of a sudden I had a blank lot next to me, and I know I'm on a lot where I could come up with maybe quarter to a half acre, I'd be kinda seriously looking at purchasing that to make sure that I have the room for my homestead and any additions I want to do. So I think, if it says land only, I think that ought to be in the, on the chopping block.
Well, and it also might, if someone is holding this for an investment, but just not paying your taxes, it might motivate them to come in and pay.
Yeah, I agree.
And there's no cleanup, yeah, exactly, all those things.
Yeah, I'd be fine with land only.
One of the things that you haven't discussed is account twelve seventy-nine, which is Mr. Violet who spoke in public session.
I think realistically.
I don't think any of us want to take that one.
No, it's favorable to, yeah, wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Yep. I didn't mean, for everybody, that was rude.
The ones that you have mentioned you want to take, correct?
Yes.
All right, so do we need to?
So we're gonna need a, need a motion.
So I need to know yes or no, you want me to leave Water Street or no?
I think we need to mark all of the land onlys.
I'm, I'm writing the numbers down now.
Excuse me, just to keep confusion down to a little roar, do we want to make, procedurally, should we make a motion? The first motion, that we're going to quickly go through this list like we already have, and we're going to pick those that will be foreclosed on with the concept that those that are not picked will be waived.
What, do you need a more, so that's kind of a negative motion, do you need something that's more of a positive motion?
I'm just trying to figure out the.
That we are going to waive foreclosure on these accounts? Or is it sufficient to say, we are not going to waive foreclosure on these accounts? I guess I just want to make sure that the motion is correct for your record keeping and for your record keeping.
I just want to be clear that, that whatever you, the numbers that you pick, like you've been picking, those are the ones that you want the city to, to take foreclosure on.
Correct.
Yes.
Is that okay, to do it that way?
As long as you have that, and everybody understands that, that what wasn't picked is gonna be waived.
Correct.
Right.
What do you want to do about three two one three? Do you want to add it or not add it? That's Seven Water Street, do you want to save it for next year?
Save it.
That's the list.
Could we maybe just on that one, for Mr. Violet, just do a quick, um, vote right now?
Yeah, do we want to do a mini?
You, you need to work that out with the people that are taking, that are, that matters to them.
I think we're almost there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're almost.
Well, if you don't, if you don't name that, then that one will be waived, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Right, right.
Okay.
So we are able to do a motion. To not waive. Okay, so we're okay.
The ones that you, ones that you give me are the ones that.
Does anybody want to look at this list that I wrote down?
And just.
Can I see them?
Oh, boy.
Just to clarify, a quick question, just to clarify, so if we were to move forward with foreclosure, if the people still come in by the twenty ninth?
Twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth, excuse me, then?
Then you're, you're taking them as excluded, they have the right to come in and pay.
Okay, so anyone that we say yes foreclosed, as long as they still come in and pay by the twenty fourth, then they're all set. Got it.
Okay. Just, just a quick, quick second, just, just one second.
We're trying to update our sheets, there's a lot of numbers flying around.
I just want to make sure.
We'd have to, we'd have to list them.
Well, your list has thirty-one seventeen, and then we're gonna waive that.
No, that's one we're not waiving, this is what we're not waiving.
Right, the thirty-one seventeen.
We're not waiving that. Not waiving, everything I wrote down is not waiving.
Got it, got it, got it, got a, got a number and a, and an address confused, that's my bad, I apologize for that. I'm not gonna check them out anymore, I've seen one number. So how are we making a motion?
Hang on.
What if we were just to read them out so that everyone could check it at the same?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Do you want to just read them?
Okay. Thirteen ninety-nine.
Okay.
So I had me a check mark, so now I'm circling.
I'm gonna put a star.
Thirteen ninety-nine, seventeen fifty-five.
Yep.
Eighteen oh three. Nineteen eighty-four. Twenty fifty. Twenty-one forty-five. Tell me, just slow down the phone.
No, you're good.
Are we doing twenty ninety-six in there too?
No, we're at twenty ninety, yes, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty ninety-six. Whoops. Okay, we're good. Twenty ninety-six, twenty ninety-six, twenty fifty, I got that, twenty ninety-six, twenty-one forty-five, okay, next. Twenty-nine ninety. Thirty-one, uh, seventeen. Thirty-three forty-three. Thirty-three forty-eight. Thirty-four fifty-eight. What's my?
That's the homestead, so let's take that off the list, please. Oh, wait, that was.
Oh, that's a bright, okay, I was getting them right, sir.
I mean, you can still have the option to pay up his taxes.
Okay, yeah, okay, got you, okay.
Yeah, I'm okay, let's leaving that.
Yeah, we'll leave that. Thirty-six forty-six. Did you write thirty-four sixty? Thirty-four fifty?
Thirty-four sixty. That one is also on the blight list.
Is it not on my list, write it on there? Do we write thirty-four sixty on there?
Yeah, I'll read that one.
Thirty-four sixty. Thirty-four, it's not here.
Just can you add it?
Yeah, just add it in. Thirty, maybe one else up here, so it's part of that. Okay, thirty-four sixty. And then you're at three six four six.
Three six four six.
Yeah, thirty-six forty-six. Thirty-nine thirty. Thirty-nine seventy-five. Forty-one twenty-nine. Forty-five eighty-two. Forty-eight forty-three. Forty-eight eighty-three. Forty-nine forty. Forty-nine sixty-nine. And fifty-one sixty-three.
About fifty sixty-five.
Right, that's land only fifty sixty-five. So it's fifty seventy, I just see that.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty seventy, and then we got fifty-one sixty-three, okay, you said that one. Fifty-seven, no, sorry, fifty-seven. Were you writing all those as we were talking? Fifty sixty-five.
We added the one that was.
The fifty sixty-five and the fifty seventy, those, okay? Okay. Can I, can I, I have to read them again? Okay, that sounds fun.
The only other one, I guess, I would bring to your attention is forty-eight ninety-four. I mean, it says that there was a shed, so there's a little shed on there.
Oh, yes, I saw that.
This one is also, um, on the blight list. And this one, okay, is the Blue House, I guess we call it, that is on Sweden Street, that we had, that actually was under construction toward now.
What's the number? I don't see it.
Forty-nine four. Forty-nine four.
Oh, forty-nine four.
Forty-nine four.
Yeah, okay, we will add that.
Do they treat, uh, land, uh, does the state treat land only as the same way that we would have to put it up for sale?
I believe so, right, it's all, it's all how we're acquiring it, which is to automatically.
Okay.
Are you ready to make a motion? Okay, yes.
So our policy as I read right now is if it goes past the foreclosure date, which would be January twenty-four, if somebody comes to me and says, I really want to keep my property and foreclose on, the policy right now says if I collect all back taxes by January thirty-first, we'll sell that.
I'm happy with that. I think we're all happy with that, that's really our goal.
I just want to make sure that we're doing all stuff.
Yeah, that's my measure in the right direction.
They just come in and they have to pay. After the whole, every, after that point, you can't just pay the one year and get back on the good list, so it's like all three.
Could be, could be actually some of these have four or five years.
Yeah. The whole thing.
Based on numbers.
Okay, let's do this.
I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yes, thank you for clarifying.
I'll just say again, we're taking on an awful lot of letting properties all at once. So, you know, and she's already, she didn't, but she did warn us that we're taking on, taking on an awful lot of liability in doing this. Maybe, maybe too much.
Maybe, I don't know.
Well, we are interviewing, we have two interviews for code officers this next week.
I think it's, I think it's both code officers, so we can't just.
I think it. Let me figure out the question here, and I think it's all.
People have the option to come and pay.
Let's make the motion.
I would like to make a motion to not waive foreclosure on these following properties. Accounts number thirteen ninety-nine, seventeen fifty-five, eighteen oh three, nineteen eighty-four, two zero five zero, twenty ninety-six, twenty-one forty-five, twenty-nine ninety, three one one seven, three three four three, three three four eight, three four five eight. I don't know if she added this here, three four six zero. Yep, right there, three six four six, three nine three zero, three nine seven five, four one two nine, four five eight two, four eight four three, four eight eight three, four nine four zero, four nine six nine, five one six three, five zero six five, five zero seven zero, and four zero nine four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second further discussion?
Um, do we have to, okay, so we do this and it goes through, do we have to do them all at, in the same year? Or do we have a, a time limit that we have to put these on, or could we spread them out so that we don't have so much to?
We're gonna own them.
Well, this, this, some committee that we, we took on suggested getting an RFQ or RFP, whatever we need to do, for Realtor who might come in, and they have to take all of it.
The whole thing.
The whole gamut.
Yeah, I know, some of these people will pay though. I mean, I feel like this might ratchet up the heat, and some people are gonna pay.
Yeah, I think that they've gotten used to that.
Also have their second chance.
Double edged sword.
To pay by the end of January.
Correct.
So if they let this, I mean, so they've got the chance to come in before, is it Monday, at four thirty to pay? Okay, so they got that chance. Then they've got the second chance, which is you can pay the whole amount that's due at that time, right? So whatever would be due January thirty-first, cause they're gonna have interest, starting, is it December fifteenth?
Sixteen.
On the, on these taxes, twenty-five. So they are gonna have to pay everything, correct? By January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And then at that point, you know, we're gonna be, I see, I'm so optimistic that we're gonna get a code officer. We're gonna have dangerous building actions, we're going to be putting in an RFP for a real estate agent. And we're just gonna have to play it out, I mean, obviously the state is not gonna work with us, change parts of this regulation that is, um, making more work for us as a community. I mean, it's, every community is having the same problem, but at some point, we're gonna have to be making examples of people, I guess. But again, I'm just telling you right now, it's going to be a lot of work, and.
And I think part of our job is to try to prioritize that, because we can't possibly expect the staff to be able to handle all of these all at once.
Like you said.
So I'd like to see Water Street concentrated on this next, let's get that cleaned up. We're getting complaints every day of that.
There, but honestly, there's others that we're get, this, uh, this one that you have on your list, um, account three four five eight, I would say we get complaints about that one every day too.
Maybe, maybe during our next meeting, or maybe the first meeting of the next year.
Yeah.
We can have a special session on this, and let's prioritize the top three for the year.
Yeah.
I feel a lot better about it, um, that we're not overburdening the staff with not knowing which one to go and tackle first, too.
You might want to wait till February just in case, cause they have until January.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
February's good.
So prioritize at February twenty twenty-six.
Further discussion? All right.
We should have already done it a long time ago.
It was our fault, because that was our committee, but we were putting it to the end of the year.
To get done, that was a lot of work, okay.
Are we ready to make a vote?
Yep.
We are.
Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all for your hard work, and thank you for your patience, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Council chambers, and Mr. Violet, it's been voted that yours is gonna be waived.
Thank you.
So that there's.
Good luck to you all.
Thank you. Okay, item twelve B is the twenty twenty-two Volvo Robert Tire Excavator Proposal, and Director Perkins is here.
Go while everybody's winded, you got a chance here, there's a window.
Bear, bear with me, I've gone, I'm running on just a couple hours sleep. Anyways, I'm kind of in a unique situation, I'm not here really asking for money, just the kind of permission to spend money I have. I just, uh, it was a unique situation to come up, uh, I was, I went up and I was told about this excavator, so I went and looked at it, really nice machine. I just think it's going to be the right, it would be the right move for us to make the purchase. I had one in my former Pascal, and it just increased our work. The, the ability to do things in-house just tripled. We had a backhoe in the budget for twenty-five, I guess they've surrendered that, you know, trying to balance the budget, whatever, hundred and seventy-five thousand, and obviously I've put it into twenty-six. So my plan was, again, just trying to be transparent, I, I wanted essentially borrow the money from my, my roads reserve, and being optimistic that. the money from my, my roads reserve, and being optimistic that my CIP plan for twenty-six would be funded. I'd like to, again, borrow the money from my road reserve, and then essentially pay back that out of my equipment reserve request for twenty-six. That, that's my thought process on it. I've been, Sue and Penny give you my memo?
It's in your packet. Yeah, starts on page fifty-six.
I don't know if you have any questions.
We won't have a twenty-six budget until.
I know. That's, 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 that was the worst part of this whole thing, it was timing. I knew I would, just in a perfect world, I'd wanna wait and see what happens.
Well, even in an imperfect world, why can't we wait?
Well, I'm afraid I'm gonna lose the opportunity.
And with all these properties, we need to potentially be cleaning up now. I think it would maybe be in our interest to, to do that.
And you've been looking for a DRMO one for years.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Somebody to clean the property, the city can do it themselves.
Tracked excavators are the ultimate machine for tearing down blighted properties.
Right.
It's running for a lot of things, because you don't have the trailer, you can just drive it.
Right, rubber tire in a municipal setting is way more you, you know, way more useful for, for public works. Like, I'll give you an example, we got a big culvert project that they did postponed for a few years on the Blanger Road, that would have to be subbed out, our little backhoe couldn't do the job. I estimated it at around fifty thousand.
Thank you.
To have a subcontractor come do it, and I mentioned it to one of our local contractors, he kinda smiled at me, said I was under, so. Just, just things like that, you know? I can't promise you guys that I can take, you know, a bunch of light projects on all at once, but if we could get one or two downs a year, it's only, you know, that only helps the city. And I have the big snow hauler trucks that we could utilize to haul, you know, to the I just know that other, I knew, I'm familiar with another community that's looking for the same thing. When we bought ours in Prescott, we bought it used, it was actually, had seven thousand hours on it, they're still using it today, but they are looking for a new one, or a newer, newer one. But that's why I thought I would maybe borrow the money from my roads reserve, and.
So, this project that you're talking about, that you thought was gonna be about fifty thousand, but you're a little under on that?
Yeah.
How much is it gonna be if you have the equipment? What is the savings to us, so it's just man-hours?
I already have the culverts, and we have the manpower and expertise.
Yeah, I'm just curious, is it like saying forty thousand dollar savings, maybe? Or is it like thirty? So.
We gotta pay them anyway.
Like, it's justifying.
Right, paying them salary.
Correct.
Yeah, it's.
Project that you're gonna be paying that money to somebody else, just because they have the piece of equipment.
And if we think of anything that we put out to bid to be cleaned up in the last year, again.
We could have done it ourselves. The city could have done it themselves.
That's what I was thinking.
And your backhoe, you're not, not going to replace the backhoe, you're gonna add another piece of equip, of equipment, so that, that opens up what you can do.
Right.
So, you still have a backhoe, you're not gonna have a second backhoe, or a new backhoe?
A municipality needs a backhoe, you know, for in-town work. We have an oh-six backhoe with a blow motor that is essentially, they can't get parts for it. We have an oh-five backhoe that was a DRMO acquisition. I don't know when Dave got it, but it's still usable, you know? We could get a couple more years out of it, especially if we take some of the pressure off it with this piece of equipment.
With this.
And then we have one that's, another one up there that's just, I'm surprised it still runs, it's just so old and worn out, it's constant maintenance expense to keep it going.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off at all.
No, no, you're.
Wouldn't this be beneficial? I've seen you guys have to call in people when there's something that needs to be brought down. Could this same type of equipment help in that type of situation? When you have a structure that needs to be knocked down? So, it could be mutually beneficial in other departments?
Oh, I think so.
Yes.
So, before, nobody wanted to use rubber tire machines on light properties. Nails, you know, air rubber tires, they've, technology, technology has changed, they make a foam-filled tire that you can, you can get by with it, you know? You still gotta be careful, it's not perfect, it's not a tracked excavator. But, obviously, municipalities can't afford both, so. They go up with, they go with the rubber tire, you don't have to truck it, you can drive it, and use it for a multitude of things. Yeah, I mean, it would be useful all around. It's, you know, it's, you gotta take on smaller projects. It's an eighteen thousand pound machine, it's not, you know, it's not a long-reach excavator, like, it wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't be any help down at Water Street. But it has plenty of other uses.
Right.
Is this a piece of equipment that replaces a planned capital purchase in the future? What does it replace that's on the capital plan now?
So, it would be the oh-six backhoe.
And when is that scheduled for replacement?
Twenty-five, it was. So, twenty-six, what I've asked for is, I've asked for the original one-seventy-five that we lost this year, plus thirty-three point three percent of what we lost, because technically, twenty-six was to replace T-two, which is one of our dump trucks, plow trucks, that was a DRMO-acquired piece of equipment, stamped two thousand and two, technically it's a nineteen ninety-two that was refurbished in two thousand and two. So, I, if I, we keep kicking that can down the road, everybody knows what happens, right? So, now I need that truck, and, and so in my, my CIP plan, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, I've, I've added that, I don't know, fifty-five thousand, whatever it is, to those three years, to try to recoup the money, because in three years, we're gonna need another backhoe. The backhoe we have now is, the one that I would keep, isn't, you know, it's been, it's
So, the money for the, for a backhoe had originally been approved as part of the capital budget last year, but then was removed when we did cuts?
Right.
That's what that, that's what it sounds like to me.
So, there's nothing in the reserve now to pay for this?
Not in the, not in my equipment reserve.
Correct.
I have three hundred and fifty-five thousand in my roads and streets reserve.
Okay, I got it, I understand. Thanks.
I would be in favor of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, too.
Right, do we need a motion?
Yep.
All right.
I'll make the motion. How do we want to clarify this motion, or, to make sure? We'll just clarify the motion. What's, what was the actual price on that one? One, nine, eighty-six, nine, five, four, thirty-nine? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, one, eighty-six, nine, four, five, nine. That, that, I didn't put it in here, and I should have. That includes a brand-new hydraulic thumb.
The company.
That was eighty, that was another eighty-one hundred dollars. They were at one, ninety-eight, and I, I talked them down to one, eighty-six, nine, fifty-four, thirty-nine, if we put the thumb on ourselves. If you wanted to charge me thirty-one hundred dollars just to mount the thumb, and we have the capabilities to do that ourselves.
So, just, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase, Chadwick Bay Ross for one, eighty-six, nine, five, four, thirty-nine.
I'll second it up.
And then internally, we can figure out where, where it comes from.
Motion in a second, further discussion?
What was the motion again, please?
My motion was to purchase a piece of equipment from Chadwick Bay Ross for one, eighty-six, nine, five, four, thirty-nine cents. Hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars, thirty-nine cents.
The rubber tire excavator.
Rubber tire excavator, yes, okay.
That's what I was looking for.
Yep.
Thanks.
Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you can get some sleep. When are we supposed to get our next snowstorm?
We will.
Got a couple days, I think.
Got a couple days.
Okay, item number twelve-C is Chief LaJoy's here to talk about the ambulance twenty-three remount proposal. It's on page sixty of your packet.
Thanks, Chris. Safe travels home. Stay, stay alert.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that his jacket? Chris?
Oh, okay.
You're gonna be chilly.
It's gonna make you a bastard.
Yeah, it's gonna make you a bastard.
I heard that.
Okay, Chief LaJoy.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, City Councilors, and City Manager Penny. So, I have the memo here before you tonight for the remount of ambulance twenty-three, which is a two-thir, two thousand and thirteen Chevy chassis, so it is now twelve years old, currently has a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-one miles on it. Typically, we, we strive to get ten years out of an ambulance, just for reasons of technology changes all the time, and just the chassis itself usually starts giving us problems as far as repairs and upkeep. Previous councilors had bought the Braun patient compartments, simply because they have a full lifetime structural warranty on them, and they're, gives them the perfect ability to remount those boxes multiple times during its lifetime, so. So, I have before you tonight, we'd be purchasing a, a gas chassis, simply because the diesel, if we purchase another diesel chassis right now, we won't be able to fit the ambulance into the fire station the way we have them parked right now, because we have them parked back-to-back. And with the new diesel chassis we have now, it, it makes the length too much, so we have to go with the gas, which shortens up the chassis on that, and allows us to be able to fit into the station. I got a bid from Autotronics for the remount, and because Autotronics is the authorized Braun dealer for the area, that's the reason I only got a bid from them. The bid pretty much explains everything that they go through. It's basically a whole redone of the whole interior of the patient compartment, upgrading any equipment that needs upgrading. This unit here will have a lot of upgrades as far as LED lighting goes. The floor will get done again. We will be putting a striker power load system in, and that will be, so we can prevent back The total cost of the bid for the remount was two hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. During two thousand and twenty-five, through the main sustainability grant, I was able to get a capital investment there of thirty-four thousand dollars for the striker power load, so that would save us thirty-four thousand dollars off that remount price, which would bring it down to two twenty-seven, eight, sixty-one. My ambulance reserve, G-one, three sixty-nine, oh-three, your figure is wrong that you have in there. I, I got an updated figure today, but it's currently at three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and forty, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. So, if this would get approved tonight, it's about six months to get us in to start the remount process. Autotronics also will give us a loaner ambulance to use in the meantime, while we're having that unit remounted, so that will still leave us with our current fleet.
Just to clarify, I understand, but just people, the remount, we're, we're buying, we're buying the, the truck, and just taking our box.
Yep.
And remounting, it's not the other way, so.
Yep.
All that equipment, and all the lighting, and all that stuff will just go back, we're just purchasing a new.
We'll have to get a new wire harness.
New wire harness.
No, that's, essentially, that's what it boils down to.
Yeah.
Because the converter and stuff on the back of the box, it's all congruent stuff, but since you're buying a new vehicle, that connector from the box to the truck will all have to be replaced.
So, Chief, what happens to the old chassis?
Uh, the old chassis would, it'll be basically a trade-in to Autotronics, they've, they've offered twelve hundred and fifty dollars for it. It's.
Twelve hundred and fifty dollars?
That was my actual question, was why, wouldn't it be better for us to keep it and liquidate it? I mean, that seems like nothing, if you're buying it for like two hundred, what would you say?
Basically, when, when they pull the chassis off, you don't have no rear window or anything like that, the cab is open.
Right.
So, it's, it's kind of a.
It's a walk-through.
Yeah.
So, essentially, if you keep the vehicle, then you're gonna, and say, like, you wanna liquidate it, you're gonna have to figure out how to pull the cab off and put a new cab on it, or a compatible cab, just to sell it.
Engine transmission.
Yeah. Yeah, essentially, you gotta frame the motor.
That's what you got.
That's too bad.
That is too bad, too, because it's like, and you said they're gonna do some, some work on the inside, too, like.
Yeah, so the floor, the flooring will get ripped up and replaced with new flooring, the power load system will get put in. Patient compartment lights are a lot, they're, in that unit are all like incandescent, so they'll put LED lighting in there. And I believe they even put a HEPA, HEPA filtration system in it.
Yeah.
Our last unit that we, we did, they, they put that in there also.
Okay.
Any of the wiring, anything that has to be done, will, will get done. A new radio system will also get put in, because the system that we have in there right now, there's, there's no parts available for it. And I've had to do some repairs to it, but I've managed to find a few parts on eBay, but those are getting pretty scarce now, so it's, it's time.
Now, any lift systems and anything that would, that's all actually comes out, right? There's, there's nothing that actually attached to the ambulance that comes out, like, I'm, I'm thinking of like my wheelchair lift, but that's not what I'm talking about, you know what I'm saying?
So, this power load system that I'm talking about, that brings the stretcher out.
That.
And, and drops the gear, and then when they hit the release, they just wheel the patient away.
And that's what you just got?
That's what we'll be putting in.
Oh, you'll be putting in it?
With the grant money, right?
That's with the grant money.
Which is great. Manually, right now, right?
So, right now, that, they'll, they, they wheel the, the stretcher up, there's a set of wheels that will go into the ambulance, and then the guy at, at the foot has to lift up.
Yeah. Call a runner.
And then hit the button, and the gear goes up, and then they have to push it in. So, there's a lot of, a lot of back injuries and stuff that can happen there, especially if you, you know, if you have a, a heavy patient.
Yeah.
Winter time's the worst. Question on this, and obviously, on for this, because we're reutilizing something or we're improving it. I mean, what does this compare to just, I want a brand-new ambulance?
Savings, yeah.
What's the savings?
Yeah, what's the saving?
I mean, this is huge, I mean, I know what, there's a.
So, a brand-new ambulance, you're probably looking for, for what were you planning on doing right now?
Just.
Uh, I wanna say you're probably looking at about four twenty-five, four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So, we're almost, kinda almost half, or.
And that, that was the whole idea, when, when they bought all these chassis with the Braun box on them, because it has a lifetime structural warranty on it, you know, to be able to remount it, to save, save money when it comes to.
Yeah, 'cause you figure if it goes, say, like, Caribou's not had one for a very long time, but Caribou's had a few ambulance accidents in the past, and they've also had some structural destruction. It, like, if you have to get close to a house, and you rub a tree or something, or that it's narrow, or you gotta get in between equipment to get something, and you scratch the box, in the past, it was considered your cost, whereas with this box, lifetime warranty, they just go, well, yeah, okay, fine, here it is, it's your turn to fix it, and we get to walk away from that cost. So, you know, and there's all sorts of crazy things that's happened, but as long as it's covered, it's covered.
You know, we've had wheeled coach boxes in the past, and I can tell you from experience from riding in the back of those in my career on shift, there's a lot of rattles and squeaking, and these Braun boxes are totally different thing because it's all seamless, so it's, they're very well-built.
And this, this purchase is on time within your capital plan, right?
Yep, yep.
So the money's there?
The money's there.
Buying it on time?
Yep.
Sounds like a good plan.
When's the next one? When's the next one?
You're gonna make a motion?
You know what I'm getting at, don't you? This is my last chance.
I knew this was coming.
Next, next year, I believe next year will be for ambulance twenty-one, which is a two thousand fifteen. That one will be, in two thousand twenty-six, will be eleven years old, and that has a Braun box on it, too, so.
Okay, well, I had to get one more pitch in.
I love that. Because this is. I knew it was coming.
So the van ambulance, you're looking at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to purchase that, and then what we want to do, you're putting us about two hundred and fourteen thousand.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm thinking down, when's the best time, but seeing how I'm on my last leg here for next month, I'm not gonna be here to bug you, so I think I'm going to just send you letters or something.
You know my email address.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move that we've authorized the chief to purchase the remount and the new chassis and do all the work with Autotronics as specified in his proposal that we hold in our hands right now.
Second.
And then, and they're gonna provide you with an ambulance from whatever time they're prepared to take. I mean, it may be two months from now, they're not gonna bring it in.
They roughly told me around May two thousand twenty-six, you know.
Bring it in, we'll do it, get it out.
Yep, so when they come and get twenty-three, they'll drop off the loaner and leave with their, we'll transfer our medical equipment into that other unit.
Counselor Bagley, could you just add the cost to your motion?
Certainly.
And just to add to that, Autotronics, just a little bit of history about them. They were, we were, Caribou was the first fire department to have a remount done in the county by them. They have, if you go on their website, you can see a picture of the first ambulance that they did, and one that they, when they did twenty-four a couple of years ago, so, you know, that was like thirty-five years ago, so. We've been in business with them for a long time, and they, they serve us really well.
Good history.
Good. I'd like to amend my previous motion by adding the words, at a total cost not to exceed two hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty.
No, but it's two twenty-seven, because of the grant money.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I'd like to amend my amendment. To add the words, at a total cost not to exceed two hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Nope, two twenty-seven.
That's what I said.
He said two seventy-seven.
Does anybody want to take a crack?
You got it, I believe in you.
You got it, Dan, you got it.
Amend my previous motion.
Motion.
To add the words, at a total cost not to exceed two hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Yeah, you could do it, I'll still second it. I believed in you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
No.
Bagley?
I.
Kelly?
I.
Lovewell?
I.
Smith?
Hi.
Terryo?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Pause in.
Don't do that while you're taking a sip of water.
I really, really, I hate it.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Hope you don't get to leave, though.
No, I'm still here, I'm still here.
Stand yourself for a second.
Yep, sure. Okay. Item twelve D is a request to be implanted and pricing for a new ladder truck. Page sixty-four. Sorry, elbowing.
I'm sorry, I'm on your computer.
No, no, I think it's me, I'm sprawled out here.
Hello again. This time you have a memo before you for ladder number three. Is twenty-three years old now, it has served this community very well. It's nearing its end of its reliable service life and beginning showing some signs of mechanical and operational wear that obviously can perfect the performance and safety of the unit. In case you ask why we look at replacing fire apparatus after twenty years, there's a multiple reasons. One, just operational safety and reliability. We have to realize that over time, critical systems such as pumps, aerial hydraulics, braking, electrical components begin to deteriorate, and especially with the roads that we have up here with all the salt and everything, it really impedes on the, the equipment on the truck. These types of failures can become more frequently, potentially jeopardizing firefighter safety and emergency response reliability. There's also standards and compliance. The NFPA recommends that frontline apparatus be retired or reassigned after twenty years. Caribou does not have a, a program where we have frontline and backline apparatuses, we have straight frontline apparatus, so that really doesn't pertain to us. There's also the ISO rating impact. Equipment condition and reliability directly affect the ISO rating for the city. As fire apparatus systems fail or underperform, it can negatively, negatively influence the city's ISO score, which in turn can lead to higher fire insurance premiums for residents and businesses. Maintaining modern reliable equipment helps protect both public safety and community's financial interest. And then maintenance and cost efficiency, older apparatus are more expensive to maintain due to parts, scarcity and mechanical fatigue, frequent downtime also reduces operational readiness and places additional strain on the rest of the fleet. We just did a repair to ladder three that was almost in the excess of three thousand dollars. Our alternator had failed. We found that the belt had slipped off, but then further investigation, there's a bracket that broke, and because of the age of the unit, we were unable to find a bracket for that. So Autotronics managed to re-manufacture a bracket to get us by, and they made the repair, and the unit's been operating okay so far, but that just gives you an example. These older units, parts are hard to find, so. The importance of the ladder truck, the ladder truck is arguably the most critical apparatus in our fleet, it provides capabilities that no other vehicle can match, including the aerial reach for rescue and firefighting operations in multi-story or large commercial structures, elevated master streams for controlling large-scale fires where ground access is limited, and ventilation roof access and technical rescue capabilities essential in both urban and industrial emergencies. People often ask, you know, why do you need a hundred-foot aerial? You don't have buildings that tall in your, in your city. It's not for height, it's for reach. We had an instance last winter on York Street that our seventy-five-foot aerial just barely got to the window of the house to do a rescue. We were stretched to the capacity on that ladder, luckily, we had enough length there to do that, so that is a big, big thing for us. During firefighting evolutions, ventilation is an important part in extinguishing a fire, so working off a tip of a ladder is a lot more safety compared to working off a ground ladder. Chimney fires is another example where we use a ladder truck a lot. Our ladder truck runs all in-town alarms along with our engine, and basically without our functioning ladder truck, our ability to perform rescues, access roofs and control large fires would be severely limited, placing both our firefighters and the community at a great risk. So new ladder truck, we're looking at about one point eight million dollars, and I know according to the city charter, anything over five hundred thousand must go to the voters for approval, so. Right now, if we start looking to build a ladder truck, we're looking at about four years before we'd even get it, if we order it. That's how far behind they are. So that would put our unit between twenty-eight and twenty-nine years old at that time. I've already spoken to a manufacturer currently that their plan, payment wouldn't be required until the apparatus is actually delivered, so. My thought process on that is if we can start the wheels rolling on designing a truck, we have at least four years to find out how we'd like to fund it, whether it's, you know, taking out a loan or leasing, or there's paid-lease programs, there's a multitude of different programs.
My question on that would, would be, you know, we don't want to commit ourselves and then say, we'll figure out how to pay for it in four years when it, when it comes to us, that would be my only concern.
Agreed, but I think.
I think we, if we were to go down the road and say, yes, we're gonna get this, we need to know how we're gonna fund it.
True.
Before it comes, whether we lease, I like the lease option, there's some pros and cons of that.
Well, there's a whole lot of pros. Can I jump in?
I just have a quick question, is there ever grant money available for something like this?
Not consistently, I don't think.
You could try for one, but getting a ladder is usually not, not in their list of things that they're most likely to, you know, we were able to get an engine with one, but they're more susceptible to go for the engines, it's not, not so much a ladder truck because, just because of the mere cost.
Have we been putting any money away every year in our capital fund for this?
Zero.
That's what I recall.
Yep. So you'll see in my, my CIP plan for two thousand twenty-six, I've, I've put in again for, for ladder three, but I've gone also from like three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, three, three installments of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to like, it's, I think, like six hundred thousand, three installments of three, six hundred thousand now, so.
Do they lock in the price or?
Yeah.
When you, when you make the agreement upfront?
Yeah. They lock in the price, so that way, yeah, there's no surprises when you get it delivered, say, oh, by the way, it's increased this much more, so. I can say, when I started as fire chief back in two thousand twenty-three, we were looking at about nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand for, for a ladder truck, and now we're up to one point eight. And when the, the guy sat with me the other day just to kind of just go over what we're looking for, he said, what have you, what have you tried to put away for, for money or thought about money? And I said, well, I'm thinking about one point six million. And he said, yeah, you're, you're right on top of it, but again, I just predicted here, if we're a couple of years down the road, we're gonna be that much more money, so.
So there's really nothing that we have to decide tonight, you're just giving us up, you're giving us an update, you wouldn't have to authorize you to start talking to people.
No, just wanted to make you aware that, you know, that it's, it's coming down the road, so I just.
Are we planning for a referendum in the fall on this?
Well, you would have to, I mean, that's the other.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
The question you want to ask yourself is, do you want to do it as a purchase or do you want to do it as a lease? And the reason why I'm throwing that out there now is because how long did it take to pay off the truck? I mean, it's an asset, you own it, but how long did it take you to pay off the truck?
That I'm not sure.
That's fine, just keep that in the back of your mind, because I might add you some other things to think about. How long did it cost for you to pay off the truck? How long was the warranty on the vehicle? Plus, what was the, what was the maintenance cost incurred during that, this entire timeframe? Because if you switch to a lease, you lose the asset, but we lose the maintenance cost because that's picked up under the lease, as well as any and all upgrades as long as we're leasing. And if the lifespan, if I remember correctly, if the lifespan of the vehicle is, say, eighteen years, the warranty would really run probably about fifteen and then drop dead. So there's three years that you're covering everything yourself, and then you'd have to worry about any system upgrades in between. In other words, if the state of Maine and EMS Region Five, and you know where I'm going with this, whoever national comes in and says, okay, these are our new standards for this year, you have two years to get this accomplished. If it's a leased vehicle, you pick up the phone and you say, hey, this is the standard, when are you coming? Because that's their responsibility. Whereas if we own the asset, like we do now, any changes at that point have to be ours to pay. So you're really, I want to try to put this out there in a strong form, that leasing is not a bad thing. You won't own the asset, but you also won't own the headaches with the asset, and that is a huge financial savings on the long run.
Well, I think what I would say is, chief, you know, has some time here where you could kind of look at the two different options of leasing or buying. And that could be something to present, but I think at the end of the day, we need to just go ahead and seek voter approval, I mean, I think.
Well, the lease, there's an option around that, leasing, you don't have to go.
No, you don't.
You do, on the five hundred, because you, I don't know how that works.
I think there was a lot of discussion about that before, you're acquiring an asset of that value.
Of that value.
I think it's still, I mean, I think.
I think the intent is that, you know.
You're not purchasing.
If the citizens are on the hook for a payment in a certain amount for a piece of equipment that is over five hundred thousand.
Yeah, no, I would be very favorable to having this go up to the voters and let the voters weigh in.
And we have to look at, on the capital, and this is a good timing because we're gonna, you know, in another month or another six, eight weeks, we're gonna start talking capital improvement, and this, and I was on the committee, and some of that money was removed for the ladder truck, we didn't fund it, because we said that we gotta do this, so this is the time to really look at this, to say.
The thing about the one point eight million also is, we're custom building this truck because, again, we just can't buy a demo unit because they won't fit in the station, so we have thirty-nine feet of length to work with. So that truck has to be designed.
To fit.
To fit in the station.
How much does that change the price, though? Since you're not buying stock.
I haven't dug into that that far yet, but.
I think that's, I think those are some pretty decent questions that I'd like to look at, not, not to be a naysayer, but I'd like to know what the difference is, you know, I'm, if I remember correctly, because it's been years, so you gotta forgive me, but there are certain size ladder trucks, you know, and you can purchase those items, and then there's what you're talking about, the custom in-between, and there's, you know, that may be something that we want to look at and see, is there something that we could pull off that's stock versus custom? You know, I understand the, you know, limitations of the, of the garage and so on, but, you know, I think that's something we need to look at.
Because our current ladder truck was a demo unit, and luckily, when they did come around to show the vehicle, we were looking at for a ladder truck at that time, and it just happened to be the right length where it was able to fit in the building, so they were able to buy that demo unit, you know.
I don't want to drag this on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think right now, this is a preliminary kind of.
Okay, I got, I have some other questions when I'm ready.
So I have three, three manufacturers that I'm kind of talking to right now just to get things rolling, two, two of them have actually come to see me, they've, they've just given me some design concepts real quick, but, you know, that's further discussions down, down the road before.
So when would you say comfortably you could come back to us with some kind of more concrete information?
Should be January.
February, January.
Probably January.
Okay, great.
Because we're sitting at capital budget time, might as well just have it right then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so you're still here, look at this. That's how an increase in inter-local coverage agreements. Take it away, chief.
So last year, I had come before the council saying that the outside communities, the contracts had not seen an increase in three years, and I had proposed ten percent, but with council talking things over, they felt that it could go to fifteen percent, so we ended up doing fifteen percent increase. So this year, not to get into that same type of situation where we don't do any increases, I felt coming with a proposal at this time for next year's contracts, five percent increase, I believe would, would be sufficient to carry us just with the added inflation costs, operation costs that's associated with providing services to the outside communities that we serve. I haven't looked at any other community fire departments to see what they're charging because I know in previous conversations that we are more, but, you know, it, it comes down to, a community can't start up their own ambulance service and the personnel and the ambulances for the cost that we're charging them to provide coverage to their communities. And by having them sign a contract, it is guaranteeing that they have twenty-four-seven coverage and that when they call for an ambulance, somebody will be there, and I think we've done a very good job of doing that, even though being shorthanded the way we have been lately, we've managed to succeed with that, so. The proposal tonight is for a five percent increase on the contracts, and still using the two thousand twenty census population for that. With the increases to all the communities we cover, that would give us another added twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents compared to last year's.
Well, and I think we did have a pretty big jump last year, and again, I appreciate this proactive approach because we did, we waited several years, and then it, you know, we're hitting communities pretty hard, so I think doing smaller increments each year would be better.
I think it better prepares the community. I think it better prepares the community, they know what to expect, and it's not quite a sticker shot to them.
My main concern last year was, it didn't, there was no data to support that it covered our costs. I was very concerned that if we're going to provide services to the outside towns and communities, then we want to at least know that we're covering our costs. Asked for that data, did not receive it, we went with 15%. I'm still not sure whether that covers our costs. And I'm not sure whether your 5% increase will cover our costs. So how do we, how do we get comfortable that we're collecting enough from these communities to cover our costs? Because not only our costs, but our opportunity costs, because while you're serving them, you're not serving Caribou.
I agree. I don't think 5% is enough.
We don't know.
But I, but it's.
The analysis hasn't been done.
Yeah, and may not be even enough at 10%.
I agree.
But I think without knowing and how I, they're going to want to give them their notice as quickly as possible, but the thing is, I don't know if maybe, is it worth it? Is it worth it to even?
Thank you.
Do that?
Yeah, but.
That's another discussion.
The only thing about covering, if we do not cover an outside community, we're going to go regardless.
I know, but.
So at least we're getting something for our services.
No, you can't not go, but.
You can be charged differently.
Is there some way, Chief, that you could try to come up with some figures for us?
I can, yeah.
Okay.
I just kind of wanted to get a little head start on this also, so we're not into the new year.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Full steam ahead on this, but we need cost data. We want, we need to make sure that we're covering our costs and we're not subsidizing the rest of the communities out of our own taxpayers' pockets.
True, but we have to, I agree with you.
Get into that, briefly into that, I mean, covering our expenses, do we include capital? Because other communities, when we did this before, other communities were like, we don't care, we just approved to buy a, rebound a new ambulance. They don't care about that.
You pro-rate all of your capital.
You have to, I mean, how do you, there's a lot of ways to look at what our expenses are per call. I mean, do we look at the whole big picture?
I agree, but there's also a breaking point that we need to watch for here. I mean, the local communities, much like us, the taxes for them, even though they're a smaller community, is way over their head, and they're yelling and screaming at the same time. So I think there has to be a path through here that is not going to make anybody happy, but is closer to reality. That's where we're going to have to end up. I'm not saying that 5% is good, 10%, 15%, 25%, whatever that number is, but I am saying that somewhere's along the line, if you only have, and I'm using imaginary numbers, if you only have a community of, say, 800 people, and you try to jack up their taxes another 10% so that they can cover the ambulance, it's not, it's not beneficial. They'll pull out. And like we've already discussed, we're still responsible for that coverage in that area. So now you've got this catch-22 problem. It would be nice if you could say, okay, look, here's this other service that is closer to you and could take you and deal with this and be a little bit cheaper. But right now, we're the only game in town.
But again, I just think we need to be able to be good neighbors without losing money on our end. And I think that's where we need to just kind of see what that, what those numbers look like. So maybe, would it be possible for you to bring that to us at the next meeting?
Yeah, I can.
And then we could maybe vote on this at that time.
And not the fees that you charge, that you come up with on your, in your own head, but the actual costs. I want to see your actual estimated costs of providing services.
Well, it'd also be nice, I agree with you. And then the other thing that needs to be added to that estimated cost is what's the factual cost now? We've done runs to Limestone, we've done runs to Corner, we've done runs to, you know, those outlying communities. What was the cost of that run? You know, we're not, it's not, I don't even need the same exact diagnosis condition for the ambulance. You know, I don't need to see three heart attacks. I just need to see what was the average ballpark cost going out, what was charged, you know, and what that cost was. And then that way, you can do the estimated costs that you want, because you'll have that foundation to step off of.
I could probably work like on an average. I don't think I can have an actual hard set number, because it all depends on call volume, what we use for.
Best effort, Chief. Just make your best effort to show that we have done our due diligence, that we've laid out some numbers, here's our best estimate, and this is, and we can go forward with confidence. So I'm fine with, I'm fine with that.
But I am glad that we're having the conversation now, instead of three years from now or waiting until February. I think this is great, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, thank you. Wait, are we done? Are you done now?
I don't have any more.
Well, wait, there's more. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, item 12F, Maine DOT over limit permit for Route 164, project number 029892, page 68.
So this is something that the city council, this is something that the city council deals with from time to time with road projects. It's the same kind of format that you've seen in the past.
Yes.
And again, it's all blank, and we're being asked to sign something that's completely blank, which I object to once again.
It's not blank, it's overweight, over limit.
No, it's blank. The contract is blank.
Well, I mean, page 70 is where you sign. And I mean, it has, you know, the bond and stuff information, I believe all that, you know, is blank. And we've had those conversations.
Yes.
Before, you know, are we going to do that? Or, you know, with bonding cards.
On this one, there's no diagrams or anything. I have no idea where this is and how, what the extent is.
This says it on this next page.
Well, it says 1.1 miles north of this intersection, but for how far, anyway.
No, I agree with you. There's not a lot of information given.
I'm not a fan of how they do these. Let's take a vote and get it done.
All right, what are the wishes of the council?
Oh, make the motion to grant the permit.
We could vote no until they talk to us about the bridge.
I don't know.
Just an idea, just a thought.
I move to approve a construction over limit permit for Maine Department of Transportation for the project number 029892.00 Route 164.
So good.
Nice, a motion and a second. Further discussion. Quick, Bagley.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Lovewell.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Terrio.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Every time that comes up. Okay.
Is there anything that can be done? Can we get some feedback back to these guys to say, stop doing that to us? Give us.
I mean, we have to send this back to them. So I mean, we can send it back with a note that says.
This gives Council Bagley like palpitations every time he sees it.
Please include a map.
It should give us all palpitations, because they're asking us.
Give us a map, yeah.
To give us, to sign a blank check with all of our signatures on it, on behalf of the city and the taxpayers. Yes, of course we ought to be concerned about that. Anyway.
Okay, item number 13, reports and discussion by mayor and council members. Councilor Bagley, let's start with you this evening.
Most of, it's already been covered, but I did want to, unless it wasn't announced already. The airport has received its, all of its equipment, is that correct, Penny?
Well, I think we're waiting for the broom.
The broom still?
Yeah.
I thought we had gotten that.
I'm not sure.
But this is all grant-funded snow removal equipment. It's going to make a huge difference at the airport, and so that's a big win. And you've already heard about the riverfront, you've already heard about everything else, so I won't belabor that anymore. That's it.
A lot of exciting things. Councilor Lovewell.
Hi. I said, adults shouldn't be allowed to be out this late, because we get a little bit goofy about this time of night. So I just want to mention that there, and I don't have the details, but Penny might. The rec I saw that Amazon was partnering with, a rec to do a food giveaway for Thanksgiving, and my company as well, is doing a free community dinner for anybody who doesn't have the means, is just alone, just wants to come and hang out with me. So that's available at Ruska at 3:00 PM on Thanksgiving Day, no charge at all. And then again, I don't have the details, but I saw it online, I thought it was so cool about the rec.
This is honestly the first I'm hearing about, sorry.
So news to everybody, but I just, yeah, I saw that Amazon was partnering and doing some food giveaways, so that's very cool. And then there's a gingerbread house thing that I need to sign up for, too. That's going to be cool at the rec.
Yeah, they do that every year.
Every year.
That's a cool thing.
So some, those are extra fun things, extra fun things, so, yeah.
I'll say that Amazon has been a great partner with different things. Like I get a lot of, like the museum has reached out, the school has reached out, you know, for tours and different things. And they've been very open to that, receptive to.
That's great.
Working with people in the community.
I love it.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, just a couple of things to talk with you. I know there's a lot of things coming up around the holidays. I get a lot of meetings, two meetings coming up regarding negotiations with the unions and stuff, but we could, going back to the tax acquired, maybe we could get together, this group.
Yep.
Throw some stuff out there. And as we had talked about, you had some land bank proposals, you've set out there, I think you put that out there, if we could get that going. And the only other thing I want to bring up, is I'm going to bring it up again, too, I think that the city should be moving towards a fiscal year. But that's for further discussion, I'm going to bring that up a few more times. Don't worry, I mean, whether I get the support or not on it, but I think we should be looking in that direction.
It's the van and the fiscal year. I love it so much.
So that's, other than that, that's what I have. Thank you.
All right.
I got nothing.
You only have one more month left, you have nothing?
I'm just kidding.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. I'm going to bless you all next month.
Yeah, all right. Tune in, folks at home, for Councilor Terrio's last meeting.
Councilor Kelly.
I'm just, I'm just excited for everything that's coming for Christmas and stuff, and I'm really excited.
Nothing less roll.
I just, a couple of quick things. I did have the opportunity, along with Manager Thompson and Gary Markey, to attend the ribbon cutting for the children's museum. It was really great. And anyone, you know, if you have a chance to go check that out, it's a really, really nice facility, and I think it's going to be great for the community. So just wanted to throw that out there. And I am also looking forward to all the great stuff we have coming up the next few weekends.
Me too, I'm excited.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun stuff.
Okay, our next regular meeting will be December 15th, 2025. We do have some executive sessions on our agenda this evening, so I guess I would ask what the wishes of the council are.
Somebody else read. That's my wish.
I move that we go into an executive session for labor negotiations pursuant to one MRSA subsection 405.6.D for fire department.
Wait, you didn't vote. All right, you have a second.
You have to have a 3/5 vote, so you better vote.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion. Bagley.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Lovewell.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Terrio.
Aye.
Watson.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So that concludes our public portion of the meeting tonight. Thank you all for being here.
I think the Danielle has things for you to sign, so don't go too far.
Turn on your microphones, please.